Good evening, welcome everybody. I'll call this meeting to order of the City of San Clemente Planning Commission for February 19th, 2025 here in City Council chambers. First order of business is the pledge. If you guys would just join me for the pledge. Ready to begin?
The pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Roll call. All commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Davis, he's absent tonight. We have no special orders of business, so the approval of our minutes from our last meeting, February 5th, is next order of business. Does anyone have any comments about the minutes? We have a slightly updated version on the dais. Everybody okay?
I'll move approval of the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner McCann and seconded by Commissioner Camp.
Hold on a second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously with Commissioner Davis absent. Oral communications, this is a standing item on our agenda to enable any resident that like to address the planning commission on a non-agenda item can do so at this time. Do we have any oral communications? Okay, seeing none. Our consent calendar is empty, so there's none of that tonight. That takes us to item eight. We have a, that's our public hearings, so our, and we have one of those tonight, so this is really our only agenda item. It's agenda item 8A, and this is a public hearing for project 24-568, the Delabar residence at 143 Cali Cervado, Cerveso?
Cuervo.
Cuervo, that's it, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry. Anyway, this is a request of the planning commission to approve a first and second story addition to increase the floor area of an existing single-family residence by about 500 square feet and to push out a second-story balcony. And what we do here, for those that have never been to a planning commission, is we have a process that we follow for the hearing, and I'm going to give you an overview of that in just a second. First, we're going to do a staff report, we'll maybe interact with the staff, then we're going to hear from the applicant. The applicant's going to have their time to speak, we might ask them some questions, then it will be public comment. Those are the blue cards, I'll call you up, you all have three minutes. And it is your time to speak, we don't like go do back and forth on it, it's just you monologuing to, your comments to us. Just so you know, we have the plans up here, we have all the written communication that was provided to the cities up here too, so we have all that, so you know. Once the public comments are received, we give the applicant a rebuttal time, so they'll have that, and then we're going to discuss all of what we've heard. Everything's on the record, so we're going to have you come up and, everyone will be on the microphone tonight for, to do that. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing now, but before I ask the staff for their report, I just want to turn my colleagues for just a minute and just see if we have any ex parte communications or any conflicts to disclose.
I've been to the site.
You've been there?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything, anybody else? Okay. All right, so with that, it is, one more thing I want to just point out, this was, has been through some of a process already, and so we understand that it's a lot to deal with the city, but the zoning administrator decided to refer to us, so we're going to, we're going to do our best. And with that, I'm going to give it over to our staff, Jonathan Lightfoot, our city planner, would you like to lead it off?
I'm actually going to defer to Brendan to provide a presentation, but I will be able to respond to any questions and supplement, the presentation is needed.
Brendan, welcome. Pleased to see you, happy to hear your report.
Good to be here. Good evening, everybody. Tonight we'll be talking about the project at 143 Cayo Cuervo. The project involves a 520-square-foot addition to an existing home that has a unit on either side. They'll be redesigning the balcony and railing and doing an interior remodel. Here's a site plan or a overview of the project area. And then here's some proposed improvements. As you can see, I've identified the areas of addition as well as the home on either The review authority is looking to evaluate this project based on its consistency with the general plan, compliance with PRD standards, consistency with city guidelines, harmony with other development, and whether it is in character with the neighborhood. This project is subject to development standards determined in a tentative tract map back in 1974. Per these entitlements, the residence conforms to all setbacks and standards in its original state. The Presidential Heights II Board approved a previous draft of improvements in February of 2024 with the following conditions: City of San Clemente Building Department and Permits Office will sign off on all aspects of the proposed project; the association is to receive a copy of approved plans from the unit owner; and subsequent changes to the plans from the city or the applicant need to be reviewed by the Presidential Heights II governing body. Typically, PRD standards are established by the developer and review authority during the entitlement process. There is no objective standards for lot coverage in Presidential Heights II. The applicant's project scope is a significant change from development standards and therefore subject to discretionary approval. This necessitates a request for a development permit to review the exterior changes and invites the review authority as well as the public to consider whether this project would have an adverse impact on the community. The ZA meeting on January 23rd had some important developments. There is a significant public interest in the project and its outcome. There are also several drafts between the plans conditionally permitted by the association and the plans being presented today. The plans presented at this hearing will be considered for discretionary approval. Any inconsistency between these and the plans previously reviewed by Presidential Heights II need to be rectified prior to building permit issuance per the conditions of approval in the HOA architectural application. The noticing was insufficient for reviewing the development standards for the PRD at this time. Matthew Plaxton, legal representative for Presidential Heights II HOA, confirmed accurate representation of association's position and highlighted the board's conditional approval and desire for involvement in future PRD amendments. The zoning administrator reached some conclusions at that meeting stating he was not making any decisions at that time. There are existing modifications inside this planned residential district that establish some precedent for modifications, and that due to the project's proposed changes being significant and the potential for public impact and concern, the planning commission would be the appropriate review authority. He also provided some feedback to the applicant on the deck design to satisfy some of the The planning department received a number of comment letters from various residents in the community. Their concerns focused on matters regarding consistency between reviewed applications, privacy, views and lighting, community character, encroachments and improvements to shared structures, railing design and the current state of the structure. Staff recommends that the planning commission determine the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to SEQA guideline section 15301, existing facilities, and to adopt resolution PC 251 approving the public hearing project 24568 Delabar remodel in addition, specific to the improvements at 143 Cayo Cuervo, and subject to attached
Brendan, does that conclude your report?
Yes, that concludes my report.
Okay, great. I'm just going to turn my colleagues, see if there's any questions before we hear from the applicant. Is there questions of staff before we hear from the applicant? Commissioner Crandall?
Yeah, with the amount of work being done and total interior changes, changes to exterior walls, do you anticipate that this is enough of a remodel to require it to meet all new codes when it's constructed?
That is correct.
So everything. Party walls will be up to the new standards, not the 74 standards.
I'm going to defer to Jonathan to answer the technical aspects of that question.
I know, we usually do it by amount of exterior walls, well, there's very few exterior walls, this is an interior unit, to determine the amount of, when it triggers to have to meet all new codes.
Yeah, so the final determination on that would be made through the building permit process where they would need to identify the exterior walls that are being touched or modified. The, that particular element would be a comment that comes out of the building division. Planning would address non-conforming instances, in this case where it's related to the code updates, it would be a building division comment, but the threshold would be 50% if the, and so I would anticipate that likely, given the scope of work that's proposed, that that would trigger requiring being conforming to the current building code. Thank you.
Anyone else, Gary?
What's the reasoning of not, of the zoning administrator not sending it back to the HOA before it comes back to us, so that we see the final plan of what the correct architectural plan is?
So, we have had correspondence with the HOA, and ultimately with development projects, the entitlement process comes first before the HOA examines plans, because that's typically part of the building permit process.
Is that right? Because in mine, you go to the HOA first.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll just comment there, the only portion of the city's municipal code that addresses HOA approval is in response, or related to issuance of building permits. It, does, our code does not reference the timeline. It does our code does not reference the timeline related to addressing entitlements. So conceptual plans that are reviewed or approved through a discretionary process do not require HOA approval to go through this process. However, at the end of the day, HOA approval is required prior to issuance of building permits. So in the scope of review today, if if there were to be an approval of a plan that the HOA has not yet approved, that would have to go back to them for approval before the city could issue building permits.
And then if denied, then we have to see the plan again?
Correct.
Seems to me it's cleaner that it goes back to the HOA and then comes back up to us for what the HOA wants. That's my initial question.
A lot of jurisdictions do it that way.
Yeah. Well, we certainly can discuss that once we go through the hearing. Okay, keep this. Well, we can come back to that.
That's it.
Okay, Commissioner Camp, questions?
I have one more question.
Okay, Commissioner Crandall, and then we'll go to you.
You seem like you're saying that the HOA approval is an approval. It's not. They're saying we are not approving it unless the city does something. So it's a conditioned approval, correct?
Correct.
And I want to make sure that's how we address it, that it's they haven't approved it. It's just a conditioned approval.
This is a conditioned approval.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Camp, any questions for staff?
Yeah, this went to ZA, right?
Correct.
And there was no problem, obviously. Why did it go ZA, this particular project?
I'm going to defer to Jonathan.
Yeah, so the scope here relates to a modification to an attached residential project that is in within one of many planned residential developments in the city. Some of those planned residential developments have clear development standards that pertain to those communities, such as lot coverage was one example that was mentioned. This is one of the communities where there are not standalone, clear guidelines for alterations. So since our code does not provide for a clear path or standards of alterations, the the avenue to request that would be an amendment or, well, yeah, an amendment to the underlying original approval. And when we discuss amendments of any prior approved applications, there's a test that we do to determine which direction that should go. The first would be if there's no impact or public concern, then staff can approve those modifications. If there's no impact but potential for public concern, then those can go to the zoning administrator. And finally, if there's potential for impact and certain public concern, it would go to the planning commission. So upon original review, in staff did acknowledge that there have been some alterations to some buildings within this community. And and so this isn't the first request for some form of alteration. And given that the city had received a conditional approval from the HOA, staff felt that the appropriate next step would be the zoning administrator. As a component, of course, of that public hearing, notices went out, and given the amount of public interest and the amount of comments that were received, the zoning administrator felt that it would be more appropriately discussed at the level of the planning commission.
Okay, so was it appealed to the planning commission or just kicked up?
Just, correct, not appealed, referred.
By the HOA.
By the zoning administrator.
Oh, so he wasn't comfortable making a ruling.
Correct.
But there's no there's no written basis for their opposition other than a concern? That's all they need to be is this concern?
These are all their concerns.
Okay, so our evaluation of the submittal is going to be, what, based on opinions? I mean, there's no there's no basis. So it's incumbent, I think, on the HOA, and I just make a statement, to have some guidelines in order to protect. But it's just a statement.
Just looking for questions.
Yeah, I don't have any other comments.
Commissioner McCann, questions for staff?
Yeah, I thought I read somewhere, and I'm not finding it this second, that it says that the proposed addition is not in compliance with the governing docs of the community. Is that an accurate statement?
Not exactly. The proposed improvements fall outside of the objective design standards for the community because they lack the guidelines. However, it's not out of character.
The the original PRD was approved with like building footprints and stuff.
Correct.
Do the docs allow for those footprints to be modified?
There's an attachment in the hearing packet. It is a what we assume to be an escrow document that states that the guidelines for the community may change over time with the desire of the community. And that was the extent of our understanding of how these kinds of things are handled.
Okay, so, okay, so I'm thinking, okay, it says that they can change over time with the desire of the community. So has the community changed those standards over time by revising their docs?
They have not revised their documents.
Okay. Why is so your recommendation, staff's recommendation is that we approve the project? Why is that staff's recommendation?
The project meets the findings to get a development permit based on the criteria for a development permit.
When we're looking at.
Is that zoning standard?
Probably that's zoning standard. Yeah, so when when we're looking at when we're considering projects, are we supposed to be considering just the city ordinances and standards and zoning codes? Or are we also considering like the CCNRs and/or the original PRD for this project?
I'm going to defer to Jonathan to answer that question.
Yeah, I think that's a good question early on to address. I don't think that the commission needs to weigh in on CCNRs within this project evaluation. I think that what we will be primarily focusing on is that in the 70s, this community was developed with certain footprints as what was identified and without clear guidance on whether those footprints could be modified. And in this case, it's not just a an aerospace subdivision. Some of these units have property lines that do extend beyond their exterior walls, so it leaves an open question as to whether those types of modifications or potentially additions could be approved. And so so I think that would be the scope of consideration here, not diving into CCNR considerations. That should remain under the purview of the HOA.
Okay, well, I'm just thinking about the the relationship CCNRs and/or original PRD site plan approval. So anyway, thank you.
Commissioner Press Call, other questions for staff?
I'll have to write it out. I have no voice.
Okay, all right. Very good. So now, Brendan, can you introduce the applicant? And the applicant has 10 minutes to make their presentation.
So I'd like to introduce Jeff Delabar and Greg Jordan to make their presentation for the project.
Thank you for your consideration, and I appreciate your time and and the efforts you're going to look into hopefully projecting or approving my project. In in a few of your questions, party walls have seemed to be a big consideration. They are double-wall framed, so there are no connections between units. There's a one-inch space that is filled with a soundboard between units. Originally, they had blown-in insulation kind of sporadically done, which was kind of inadequate, which, of course, will be addressed, and that will be upgraded. The next thing you asked about whether we kicked the units up to having to be modified to today's standards. We are going to have to sprinkler the unit, so there will be fire sprinklers. So all since there's so much work being done, it will be upgraded to today's building standards. We've updated the plans and pulled back the upper deck to maintain a two-foot setback from the neighbors because that seemed to be the the zoning commission's big concern to maintain setbacks so that we weren't inflicting or jeopardizing privacy to the neighbors. I do want to say that my wife and I are very excited about moving into the unit. This process has taken quite a while. We're really looking forward to being a part of the of this community. The the little pod that we are moving into has got a lot of young families and a lot of very established families, and I've made good connections with a lot of the people there. And we're very much looking forward to moving in and starting to enjoy the beautiful view that we're hoping to capture with the modifications that we've done. Another issue that I thought you brought up was how we came about deciding what we could or what we couldn't do. Based on other units that have been modified, we feel that we're maintaining similar or exact footprint modifications as any other unit in our style of unit has been modified in the in the community. That being said, I think that probably the biggest thing that we're changing is the glass railing. The old wood railing kind of fell apart, and it doesn't really do much to accentuate the beautiful view that you get from the second floor of the structure, which is kind of where we want to have the living space. And realizing that there were some some people very concerned about noise levels. The existing units had dishwashers on on the walls in between units. This the dishwasher on the second floor will be placed in the island, which is in the center of the unit, so there shouldn't be much noise transfer. And due to modern technology and appliances anyways are quite quiet. We really haven't modified the structure too much more than it's a three-bedroom, and it will remain a three-bedroom unit. The connection to the garage is a laundry room. And so there you go. That's about all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
And you are?
I'm Greg Jordan. I'm the designer.
Okay, so you're on his you're on his time.
I'm on his time.
Okay, so you're speaking on behalf of the applicant?
Correct.
Okay.
First off, I wanted to touch on the the only modification that was made to the plans that the HOA is currently, other than their attorney currently unaware of, was the change in the, excuse me, the glass rail that was relocated per the drawings over here. It's hard to see. The original plan to call for the balcony to come out to the red line. After going through the HOA three times and appealing to the board, we were approved at the dotted line here, which comes right at the point of intersection with the neighbor's exterior wall. At the last hearing, the zoning administrator had suggested that we take the railing back. So that's the blue line that that represents, and pulled it back an additional two feet. That's the only modification that the HOA is unaware of. Another thing to point out. There are dozens of units in the Presidential Heights Two community that have done exactly what we're trying to do. We've kind of tweaked them a little bit differently, but many of them have expanded their rear balconies to extend from side to side. Many of them have popped the front upper floor out and enclosed the space between the garage and the existing the main residence. And we've that's what we've been asking for. We've popped the western wall out on both levels, and there are quite a few examples on the board here. I can go point those out.
If you could bring it back to the podium so we can have you on the mic, that would be preferred. Brendan, do you mind helping him out, just holding that so he can maybe speak into the mic?
Yes, these are also in your hearing packets, these exhibits.
I just wanted to point it out because there's so many examples of this. So this is an example of popping the upper floor out at the front of the home. And here's another one. Here's another one. This one here has a balcony that is attaching between the garage at the second level like we're requesting. And then it's also connected, and they've added at the lower floor. So there's one, two, three examples of that. Four, here's a fourth one. Here's a fifth one. Here's a sixth one that's a little smaller. It's just a pop out at the upper floor. Seventh one, it's a pop out at the upper floor. Eighth one, pop out at the upper floor, small connection at the lower floor. Then here's a photo of the balconies extending from side to side at the rear of the property. And here's another one where you can see the balcony goes all the way across. Another one. And those are the main. I can put this back.
The main exterior alterations. And I'm going to emphasize exterior alterations because we spent a lot of time in the past going over what we want to do on the interior of the residence, which it took three tries, but finally, the HOA's Board of Directors agreed that that's not their purview and that they should just be looking at changes to the exterior of the structure. And we've had neighbors complain about that ad nauseam with the reverse floor plan, with the placement of the kitchen on the upper floor, concerns about weight. In any event, I'm happy to try to answer any questions it might have.
Okay, so that concludes your presentation?
Correct.
Okay, just so you know, we do have those photos in our packets, but I do appreciate you walking us through. We probably do have some questions up here for the applicant, perhaps even both of you. So if you want to join them up here, I'll just start at the end here, and we'll work. We'll just check on everybody, and then we'll take the public comment. And then we'll invite you back if you want to respond to the public comment. Okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, Commissioner Crandall, questions for the applicant?
Certainly.
When you started this project, did you work with the HOA from the very beginning?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we did. The architectural board, we volunteered multiple times to meet with them, and we were denied each time. They didn't seem interested in having an explanation given to them by either one of us.
That was more of a problem with the ARC committee.
The ARC committee.
Because the neighbors and the residents had a lot of questions. And we said, hey, we're happy to meet with you guys, and we can save some time and let us explain what we're actually trying to do. But they weren't having it. And so we had, they said, you can join in on a Zoom meeting for the at the Board of Directors meetings. But it took us, you know, a year or more to get that approved. It was three tries, three redesigns. And then the board realized that the arguments that they were paying attention to had to do with the interior of the structure, and that wasn't their purview.
One other thing, we did do some renderings, and the first photos there are art artistic rendering of what it would look like. The last comment section was that the garage door is not legal. Obviously, the garage door is just an artist's rendering. It's there will be no windows in the garage doors. So it'll it'll maintain the integrity of the.
Okay, well, that I want to make it sure for the public and body here and those watching that we can't take into account what the HOA or the CCNRs dictate. That is not in our purview. That is a contract between you and the homeowners association. So we will be looking at this void of any of those concerns and whatnot. That doesn't mean we can't say that the HOA has the ultimate say in this. And I want to make sure that any of our discussion doesn't give the impression that if we approve or disapprove, that it should affect the HOA's findings at all. They they need to make their decision independent, totally independent of what occurs. They need to make their decision independent, totally independent of what occurs here.
I understand, too, that their, their conditional approval was based on the Building Department approval of the plans, so they actually.
Yeah, HOA approval is mandated.
Yeah.
At the Building Department level.
Yes.
This body here, we're doing just kind of a preliminary review. It is not normal policy here at this city to require the HOA approval at the time we review it. So we do have to make sure we don't try to impact what the HOA's decision is. We want to stay free and clear of that, at least I do.
Sure.
Want to stay free and clear of that. That's your question, oh, okay, Gary. Commissioner Camp, questions of the applicant?
Okay, so it appears that, I guess we'll hear, that the primary objection has to do with this balcony and the glass railing. Is that an accurate statement?
That's what the HOA has yet to, they haven't seen that change, other than their attorney was at the last meeting, so he realized that's what the zoning administrator had asked for. He suggested, I think your neighbor has a concern about this. We, we thought we'd appeased him with the first revision when we pulled the deck back, but Adam suggested we pull it back another two feet, so we said, fine.
It was actually just six inches more, so, to maintain a two-foot setback.
And you mentioned that there are multiple projects that have done the same thing, basically?
Similar things, yes. All the components that we're asking for have been done and approved by the HO and by the city previously.
Okay. Do we have a rendering or any sort of an image showing the balcony at an angle like this in context?
There is one up on the screen right there, just an overview of the upper floor plan.
I'm talking about the exterior image.
I don't know that there is another unit that has an angled balcony.
Yeah, there's not an example of the glass rail that I know of, but the HOA approved the glass rail, and again, that was.
And that was a suggestion of the ZA, the angling of the balcony?
Pulling it back an additional two feet. It was already angled, so it resulted in a steeper angle.
Okay. Well, I guess it'll be interesting to see what the objections are. All right, that's all.
Okay, Commissioner McCann, questions for the applicant?
Sure. When was the demo done? June of this year?
Yes. No, June of 24.
Yeah, 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 the most recent June. So, and it sounds like you had been in communication and aware of the HOA and their Architectural Committee and so forth before then.
We had received approval from the HOA to move forward with going to permitting, yes.
Okay, so, did you not, why did you demo then before you had a permit if you knew that you needed a permit, and you, that was a, that was a condition of the HOA's approval?
We were mistakenly believing that we were dangerously close to getting the permit, and that wasn't the case. We had been originally requested by the Planning Department to see if you could, if we could get the HOA to amend their CCNRs, and I explained, we've already spent a year and a half with these guys, there's no way they are going to amend their CCNRs for us. Then we were presented with another alternative with the list of four things to try to provide, which we did to the best of our ability, but then it was restated that, no, we want to, if you can't get the HOA to change their CCNRs to specifically state that we will approve any other unit that's basically wants to do exactly what you want to do, then you're going to have to go to this process, which started with a zoning administrator.
I think he asked a different question. We opened up the interior to expose what the structure looked like to, so the structural engineer could do his job. That was done months before that. In the process, I had a few days off, and we decided we were going to take down a patio cover and the second floor deck that was basically rotting. And one thing led to the next, and we got a little over-aggressive and started, just got the demo done. So it, it was not intended to go that way, it just kind of snowballed into going too far.
Okay, so for, for, for my colleagues that may or may not have been there, the unit is gone. There's no front walls, there's no back walls, it's gone. It's like, there's an empty volume where there's space should be. They've got neighbors on two sides, they've got some temporary tarp over the shared wall with the neighbors, and then there's a roof structure above. So that's the current stat of, status of, of things out there.
All the interiors?
All the interior is demoed, and the rear wall, the entire rear wall and the entire front wall by the garage is gone. They just have two side walls with the two neighbors, and those interior, drywall and stuff is gone, too. It's down to framing, like there's some Tyvek and tarps and stuff covering the shared walls. So it's, it's, to say it went a little too far is, especially when you guys were, had discussions with both the city and the HOA, it's, it's understated. Okay, so, that's all my questions for you. Thank you.
Karen, are you going to forego, or did you have something?
No, I'm listening to everybody else.
Okay, fair, fair enough, okay.
A lot of questions, no answers.
Yeah, okay. So I'm trying to follow your, your line of thinking, your perception of the objection. We're going to hear what the objections are in a minute. I've got five cards, I'm sure we're going to hear them. But I want to understand your perspective. Your perspective is that you perceive the objections all regarding the exterior to be the upstairs balcony?
I think.
That's.
We heard every type of objection, objection imaginable, but the balcony was one of them from the connected neighbor on that side, and we had met with him during the HOA phase of trying to get approval, and we redesigned at that point. After the meeting, we redesigned again because he still voiced more, you know, concerns or disapproval.
Okay.
And then most of the other comments that we heard ad nauseam related to the inside, they didn't like the reverse floor plan. And we reversed the floor plan because the lower floor had an eight-foot plate, the upper floor is already vaulted, there's an ocean view that's twice as good going upstairs. There were concerns raised about, you're going up, it's, it's going to mess with the privacy. The neighbor to the south is a one-story neighbor, so now we've taken our living area, and it's up above him, so that reduces any, but we haven't, so far, knock wood, we haven't heard any complaints from that neighbor. But, so that, the neighbor on the other side, again, like Jeff had mentioned, our, our kitchen is on the opposite side, dishwasher's in the island, there's no appliances, bathrooms against the common wall upstairs now there used to be, so I think the, the noise concerns are unfounded.
So, okay. See, so to summarize, I just want to focus really my, my attention on the exterior changes.
Okay.
Is that, so you're filling in the courtyard, would you consider that an exterior change or interior change?
Exterior.
Exterior, okay. So by filling that in, what are you, what are you changing on the elevation or to the exterior of, or the, or any of the, to the property?
Right now, there's a courtyard there. It's kind of a big void. There's a long, two-story stucco wall, so we're kind of softening that, we're infilling it, we're connecting at the lower floor. There used to be a kitchen in the front that went upstairs. Now we relocated an upstairs bedroom to downstairs, like a guest room when you come in.
That all sounds interior. I'm trying to focus on the.
Oh, the exterior has.
The perimeter of the property changes.
Yes.
The perimeter of the property, what are you changing, either elevation-wise or perimeter of the property?
Yes, there's this, there's a, the, the existing kitchen was on the bottom floor. It sticks out approximately half the distance between the face of the main house to the garage, leaving about 10 feet from the face of that structure to the garage, and that's being in-filled on the bottom floor, and the upper floor is extending out over that same footprint.
Lower floor changes.
And that's going to change the elevation?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
It'll change this side elevation. You don't notice it from this angle.
Got it.
From, from the east angle.
Where's the street?
The street, the, here, and then there's parking cul-de-sac in here, and then Caie Cuervo is south.
Would you say, are you on a corner unit then?
No, we're, we're.
Okay.
One unit in.
Okay.
Just to show you, this is the bottom floor additions, in gray and crosshatched. This is the upper floor additions, four foot here, about here, lower floor connecting the garage, a new little foyer there, popping the lower floor out there.
Got it, okay. So you are extending on both ends?
Yes.
Outward?
Yes.
Changing both the parameter, perimeter as well as the elevation?
Correct.
Okay.
The elevation from the west doesn't change visually because it's the same view.
And how have you maintained the character of the community in these changes?
We have a bunch of examples that we mimicked, so.
In, in the renderings?
Not necessarily just the renderings, but other units that have done very, very similar projections to the courtyard area, as well as having a second, a second-story deck. Some of them have, they have a trellis that they've done a little different than what the, the stock trellis was, but a lot of them have just a little, small little eight-by-eight.
So you're, what you're, you're claiming that you have duplicated those other additions so that you are either identical or some, or very close to those?
That's correct.
So you're not introducing anything new to the community?
No.
In terms of an elevation?
No.
Do you, do you agree with that?
I agree, but we're, we're combining perhaps more, some, maybe those units only did the addition at the front and not the back. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Okay.
The back additions that I've seen, that I was able to see by driving around the neighborhood are on different units because they were more visible, the deck expansions, et cetera.
Okay. So where you are extending out, I'm trying to formulate my question as it relates to, are you in, what, what space are you taking over? What was there before? Was it landscaping? Are you within your setback?
Patio.
What is that?
Concrete patio.
Okay, so you're within your, your structure's footprint? You're not extending beyond your own footprint?
Correct.
You're not going into any setbacks or any right-of-ways?
No, and our, our property line at the west extends beyond what we're proposing. The existing property line at the east is what the, where the garage is built to already, the existing garage.
Okay.
With no change, so.
Okay.
The only area where we had more property was at the rear, and that's where we added. And it's surrounded on two sides. It's essentially a concrete courtyard that we're grabbing some of. Same in the, between the garage. It's a concrete patio that was a big void, that was two stories, and we're infilling it like dozens of other homes have.
All right, thank you. That's my questions. So what I'd ask you to do is just have a seat, take notes on what you hear, because I'm going to call you back, and my, this is how I normally like to do it. I'm going to take notes on the concerns I hear, and I'm going to repeat them back to you, and I'm going to ask you to respond to those.
Sure.
Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there an attached garage then now? This garage attached?
It would become one.
Yeah.
It's detached.
It's detached, but it will become attached.
Yep. Okay. Last minute, so now I've got about seven cards, so I'm going to just call them in the order that I was, they were given to me, so I hope that's going to be okay with everybody. I'm going to call a few at a time so that you can be ready. The first speaker is Azelle Berg, Burke? And then we have Susan Mizarella, followed by Joe Mizarella. So I'll get the three of you, and then we'll go from there.
Hello, and good evening. I'm Elsa Burke, and a longtime resident, actually, I don't want to tell you how long I've been an owner there, but it's been a while. Actually, I, I'm an original owner, so I've seen a lot of changes. I'm also, by the way, before I start, thank you, thank you so much for taking the time to meet and actually try to help with this situation, and kudos to the City of San Clemente for, for actually making that happen. It's, it's very useful, and I think I speak for most of our residents when I say thank you. So, to start with, just to clarify a couple of things, I've been on the Architectural Committee for a number of years, and what we've learned over the years is some of the things that we have approved were things that we would not want to approve again. We've made some errors, and also, what we found, and this probably happens more than people realize, is that it's, it's very interesting how a patio will all, all of a sudden just have glass, and no one knows where it came from, but it's there. Or we have a few additions that were really poorly made that weren't quite discovered until they were already there. So instead of asking these people to fix them, we've kind of lived with it. So just because it happened before does not mean that we would approve it again or that we had approved it to begin with. So that's just one thing. And just not, I don't know that it really matters greatly, but when the Architectural Committee received this application, we denied it on the grounds that we needed more information, and we wanted to have some more points that were already resolved. In other words, it's not unusual for us, when we approve a project, to have an end date. Obviously, that never happened, and unfortunately, for some reason, within the HOA, the board decided that maybe it was a good idea to let this happen, and so that's kind of why we are where we are now. Our goal is mostly consistency. We like to keep things the same. The development was built in the 70s, and quite frankly, even back then, the planning was done quite well. We have maximum privacy, the way the patios are laid out, they're laid out for maximum privacy, and as are the insides. Not that we have great insulation, but the units were laid out so that privacy was an issue. And so when you take a unit like this, and I happen to have an identical unit, only mine hasn't been torn down, it's about 1,400 square feet. So when you add.
So I have to ask you to wrap up?
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me, let me just leave you with a very simple thought. If you think back to when your children were in school, and they had their little workbooks, and they had pages where they had a bunch of pictures, and they were asked, which one is not like the other? I think that, that's probably our biggest objection, is that the changes are so significant that we probably want to revisit the project.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
No, thank you for your comments. So she's doing her best, but I, and we appreciate everyone coming, I just want to coach you to just keep an eye on the little timer for the three minutes?
I'll just.
That's okay. We do that just out of fairness so that everyone's treated the same, and we just keep it, keep it moving, too. So you're Susan Mizarella?
I'm Susan Mizarella.
Okay, followed by your husband Joe, I presume?
Right.
Okay, very good. Thank you and welcome.
Thanks, thank you so much. So we live at 145 Caie Cuervo, which is next door to the void. We've lived next door to the situation for, now for nine months, and I'm going to keep my comments brief, obviously. We submitted a very lengthy correspondence that you have in the hearing packet outlining our many concerns, which we have shared with the board and which our neighbor knows about as well. Our primary concerns are around the design of the community and what we feel this project is going to change if it's approved. So primarily, we're talking about the patio downstairs and the balcony upstairs. Our unit has a beautiful ocean view from the first-floor patio, as did the Delabars. All of these units were designed so that the outdoor living space and entertaining space is on the first floor, right? So we can, can have barbecues and furniture and all, all of those kinds of things on the first floor. Because they want to reverse the floor plan and put the kitchen and living space up floor, they would like to extend out that, the balcony, which was really originally designed to be about four feet, to be something like 10 feet, which is more like the downstairs patio, and reverse that outdoor living space upstairs as well. We're obviously concerned about that from a privacy perspective. We're obviously concerned about that from a privacy perspective. We're concerned about it from a noise perspective. Being able to see down into our patio. You can also see very clearly down into the neighbors who are downhill from our units if you're upstairs on the balcony. So it causes issues of that kind, not only for us, but for other people in the community. The other issue I want to talk about are adherence to the community governing documents. So I know it's not your responsibility to make sure that they're implemented, but there are some significant pieces in those documents related to party walls, including the requirement that the owners on both sides agree in writing to any changes that occur. We've already had significant changes occur when half of that wall was deconstructed without any agreement. And now these plans obviously include changes to that wall. So we wanted to make sure we point that out. There also seems to have been a misconception from the first hearing that we had that our HOA architectural approval requires homeowner awareness. So required to get three neighbors to basically acknowledge the project, which we did. It's not an approval. We've heard that term thrown around a couple of times, that we approved the project. We did not approve the project. We don't approve the project. It's not, that's not up to us. So we just wanted to make that very clear, that we have not approved this project. And unfortunately, since these plans violate those governing documents and the HOA hasn't taken action, it's looking like we're going to have to escalate this issue ourselves, which is really unfortunate. So thank you for your time.
No, thank you for your comments. Mr. Mazarella, followed by, I have no name, but it's the owner of 141 Cali Cuervo. What's that? Okay, Suzanne. Okay. All right, Mr. Mazarella, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you very much for hearing me. And I'll, I'll talk kind of fast to make sure I get my points in. So the applicant's proposed plan to extend the unit by roughly thirty-five percent in square footage. You know, five hundred, approximately five hundred more square feet will increase our shared wall space and will affect the current noise abatement protection that is provided by their architectural design and staggered units. I know there's been a lot of talk tonight about patios. It's not just that. It's moving out that whole west wall even before you get to the patio, where now, where my bedroom is will be exposed to their living room area, because everything's flipped. And right now, even with it not being flipped, with the current design, the way it was, my, that one bedroom never got exposure to anything because there was no shared property structure, internal structure on that other side. So I want the, that to be kind of thought about in terms of it's not just the extension of the balcony, it's the extension of the whole unit. Another comment, they are putting a, in the plan, we saw a proposed front balcony in the front patio. That doesn't exist in the current courtyard. There's been some talk about some of these modifications being done in the property. Some of those are in reference to things that were done not even in PH2, but in another association, Presidential Heights one or three. But even within our cul-de-sac, no one has a front patio overlooking the courtyard. So, you know, the, the flipping of the, the, the move to the kitchen, living dining areas to the unit on the second floor and creating a significantly larger capacity upstairs balcony increases our privacy and noise concerns. Out, as does that upstairs courtyard deck. The Presidential Heights Two Architectural Review Committee denied the application twice for valid reasons. With regards to the west-facing balcony, the review committee specifically noted they no longer intended to approve balconies any wider than those that were installed in the original PH2 building. Their denial includes the following quote, "We believe that a full-length balcony diminishes privacy enjoyed by residents of the immediately adjacent units, especially when using their patio areas and therefore not compliant with architectural standards of the association. Furthermore, our policies do not require us to follow precedents of previous boards and committees, especially where we have reason to depart from what we may view as questionable decisions made by previous committees or boards." So in addition, the plans included in this hearing packet are substantially different than the plans that were given conditional approval by the HOA Board. And that was actually violated when the applicant started the demo before he got the proper permits. So the HOA Board did overrule the Architectural Committee, but as the homeowners who are most impacted by the proposed plans, we respectfully ask that the Planning Commission deny or reject the application and allow all involved parties, including the owners and HOA, to resolve the compliance issues prior to permits being issued. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Okay, your name is Susan?
Suzanne Rutherford.
Suzanne Rutherford. Okay, followed by Matt Paxton. Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. I am the owner of 141 on the other side, single story on the end. I just wanted to say I'm very tired of this already, as is everyone, because it's been almost a year since my property has been exposed and at risk. The drywall that's, that, that's showing right now wasn't even covered, by the way, until we requested that it be covered. So it was about six months before the drywall was even protected a little bit. Anyway, so my primary concerns are basically the back. Because I'm just not clear, the privacy walls, in my opinion, are there for a reason to make sure that since everyone is close together in that neighborhood, the privacy walls do protect us from seeing anyone else. And according to the pictures, it looks like the back patio comes way out beyond the wall. So I'm just not clear. I'd like to see a comparison on the new design. A comparison of the old footprint compared to the new print, new footprint, and very clear pictures of what is being proposed. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you for your comments. Matt Paxton, followed by Carol Glashine.
Hi, good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Matt Paxton. I'm a partner with Tinley Law Group. We serve as general counsel of Presidential Heights Two. So I know there's a lot of questions and comments about the HOA's involvement in this process. The HOA did initially approve, or at least the Board of Directors did approve on appeal, the plans. During the zoning administrators' hearing, we did learn though that those plans had changed. Those new plans, even though seemingly insignificant changes, have not been reviewed yet or approved by the Architectural Committee or the Board. So really, this would need to go back to the committee for approval. If they reject the proposed application, then it would be appealed to the Board for the Board's consideration at that time. So I just am here to provide you with an update, kind of where we are in the process, to answer any questions that you might have concerning that process. And also to request that you strike the, if you are inclined to adopt the draft resolution, that you strike the portion that says these plans are approved by the HOA, because technically, they're not at this point, at this juncture, so. So that's all I have to say, so.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna designate you as the HOA representative? Okay, so with that, I'd like to just retain this witness just for some Q and A. Can I do that?
Unfortunately, no. He is not a part of the public hearing in that, in that respect, unfortunately.
Okay, sorry about that, Bart. All right. Well, thank you for being here. We appreciate your comments. They were helpful. Okay. Carol Glashine, followed by Beiki Paul, or Paul Beiki? And that's our final speaker is.
Almost everything's been covered, but I just want to say I'm on the Architectural Committee.
Do you mind just stepping right up to the mic if you could, so we could just capture your comments? Thank you.
I'm on the Architectural Committee, and also I've been a board president for two terms. And the whole, this whole episode really shocked me. We, the whole Architectural Committee voted against the plan. And our primary reason, there were lots of them already mentioned, but the fact that it would be the only unit with the kitchen upstairs and bedrooms downstairs. Kitchens are very noisy places. They're also very heavy places in terms of all of the fixtures that go into them. The construction doesn't even show any steel beams or anything to hold all that weight. So we would have to change the construction to support it. Also, being on the second floor, the most important point that everyone pointed out is that you're going to be projecting noise all across the community. And the original plan really was smartly done to protect the quiet and the privacy. Those are the two main things. And this would be the only unit out of a hundred and fifty-some odd that has an upstairs kitchen. So I don't think that's appropriate. It could become, it could set a standard, and we'd have a very noisy community instead of a really nice, peaceful, quiet community that we now have. So I would say that was the most important thing.
All right. Yes?
I resent the fact that a person who's been posted two times to stop work just continued to completely gut the place. And the rain was pouring in for like ten months. That certainly has to have done some damage to the common walls. And that shouldn't be tolerated. It sounds criminal to me. It really made me mad. I'm still mad. And everybody's mad about it. And plus the fact that once we all rejected the plan, Mr. Delabar went and small-talked to all the neighbors to convince them that it was going to be great. And that's just not appropriate. I think some new members on the Homeowners Association Board just didn't know what they were doing. They should have discussed it more in the community before it ever transpired.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Paul Beiki?
Beiki.
Welcome, sir.
Yes, thank you very much for hearing me this evening. Yeah, I like to call this the endless story of the endless condo. Both ends of the condo are missing, so you have a breeze just going right through there. So one thing that I would like to state, state too, is I don't see why this gentleman should be rewarded for going against the process of doing this properly. He had no permit when he gutted it. And to me, that's, and then also when he gutted it, he let loose asbestos. There was asbestos flowing through the courtyards. Some of the neighbors cleaned up this asbestos. To me, there should have been some kind of asbestos abatement program done along with this, you know, construction. So I thank you very much for your time, and please don't reward him for not following the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank everybody for your comments tonight. Did everybody that wants to speak, did they speak? I don't have any more cards. Okay, I just want to make sure everybody's had their, their turn. With that, we give the applicant three minutes to come on up and respond. Hopefully, you can answer questions and respond to what you've heard.
Happy to answer any questions. An end date, I don't know that an end date was ever discussed or requested by the Homeowners Association when putting an application for this. And seeing how the process has gone, projecting an end date to something that you, as a moving target, is almost impossible. One of these things is not like the others. One of the units has done exactly what we're doing. They actually pushed the second floor and the first floor out on the west side of the structure, six feet, instead of eight and four. Same square footage, just a different configuration. Yes, our courtyard has no other units that have a second floor balcony looking into the courtyard area. We are the first ones in that little pod of homes to do that. I don't feel that it's a negative impact, and it's probably not something that's going to get a whole bunch of use. Was more interested in the architectural feature of separation and massing the project properly so it actually looked like other things that were done in the, in the, in the community. I noticed that our neighbor, looking at 145 and 147, they have pretty nice second floor decks that go right up to the end of their party walls. They're the walls that provide privacy. So they could actually peer into their neighbor's yard. Our deck is approximately four feet on the end closest to 145 and approximately nine feet, eight feet on the 141 side. We have every intention of extending the privacy wall to maintain that the 141's privacy is maintained. It actually does affect our view by maintaining that, but it's what's requested by the, by the zoning commission and also the, the HOA. So we did maintain that. Let's see. To address Matt's question about the approval, I'm very aware that the, that the HOA does, has not approved. It's a conditional approval. I've never questioned that. And any changes obviously have to be reviewed again once plans are approved, if they are approved. So that's probably does my notes. Greg, if you have something?
I don't, I'm happy to answer questions. It's.
The noise factor by flipping your.
I don't agree with the, the noise comment. The, we used to have a bathroom on the upper floor on, adjacent to 145's property. Bathroom has more noise, but it's, there's no bathroom over there now. It's just open end of the living room opposite the kitchen. The asbestos, there wasn't asbestos in there. It, it was built in seventy-four. They weren't using asbestos for anything in seventy-four.
Actually, it was built in seventy-eight.
Oh, was it?
Seventy-eight is when it was built.
Seventy-eight, sorry.
So. All the interior demo was done long before the exterior walls came down.
Your time's expired, but I just want to ask my colleagues if they have follow-up questions for you while you're up there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone for the applicant, based on concerns they heard from the community? I'm sure Cam's going to go first, and we're going to go down the line, and then we'll come back to Art. Okay.
Okay, so you're the first to propose this reverse or flip of floors. No other, no other units have done that, even in Phase One, or? Okay.
As far as I know, obviously, some other people have done remodels. I don't know if they've reversed the floor plan and maybe not pulled permits. I, I, I can't tell that that's been done. Obviously, the Homeowners Association and the Architecture Board isn't aware of any of that being done.
The Board of the HOA realized that's not their purview, to tell you how to design the inside of your home. They're supposed to look at the exterior elements, so.
And as far as the structural concerns, as that goes, there are many, many homes throughout San Clemente that have kitchens on the second floor. It doesn't really require any extra load calculations to support a kitchen. All those things were addressed with engineering, and the Homeowners Association did get a full set of plans, I believe, with engineering. But they also requested an outside firm to come in and help them to understand the architectural design features. Again, Greg and I are more than happy to go in and discuss all of these things with them. We were very willing to do that, but no one seemed to be willing to let us speak to them directly.
Yeah, I mean, that's not in our scope, anyway.
That was one of the, was one of the things that was brought up during discussion.
Are you guys, well, it sounds like there's been some changes that have occurred over the course of this.
The only change that the HOA Board hasn't seen is the change to the plan regarding tucking the rail in an addition, at the second floor glass guardrail, tucking that in an additional two feet. That's the only change that they have. They've seen the full set of plans except for that.
So other than that, you've not made any changes through this process?
That they are not aware of, right.
There have been building corrections that have been done, but they were in, all interior corrections that needed to be done.
Okay.
And they might not, well, they probably know about the sprinkler plans, but that's a deferred submittal.
So there were, you consider them refinements?
Correct.
To the interior layout. Are you negotiable on any part of this design, based on what you've heard? Like, for instance, the balcony on the front courtyard, is that a negotiable item? You know, the, the extent of the balcony in the rear, is that negotiable? We'd like to get to a solution.
The rear balcony's been modified twice, if, if not more than that. The front balcony.
I really want to get the house built, so yes, I am flexible. So yes, I am flexible. Of course, I would like to have the largest balcony I can have on the ocean side, just because it would be nice to have that space. But again, I am, obviously, I'll be negotiable on that.
The front balcony, though, which is a concern, looking over the courtyard, does that have the same ocean view? I don't think it does.
It has a view of garage doors, and I, it's the first I've really heard that there's a problem there. It's a, it's an eight, approximately an eight foot by eight foot space that is not really going to be used for anything other than a sliding glass door to go out there to let in light. It's, so it's, I suppose I'd be open to modifying that. I'm not sure exactly what that looks like, but.
Well, it did come up.
Yeah, I, I understand. It did come up, but I'm, I'm curious to know what the suggestion would be. And since other units have done that, there's probably half a dozen that have that space converted to a second floor deck.
Yeah, but maybe they didn't do all of it. So you have priorities?
Yes.
As far as what you want to get done. Obviously, you want to close up your, your building. I'm assuming, I guess this is a question, that the rear balcony is a high priority. Let's say over the front balcony.
If I were to pick one to not modify, it would be the back. But if, if it, if people are really wrapped around the axle about the extent of that, if there could be some sort of, if it needs to be straight across and we maintain four and a half feet, which would give 145 their two foot setback and would be quite a few feet of setback from the neighbor on 141, I, I'd be okay with that. It doesn't make me happy, but, you know, I, I really would like to move this project forward. And I think, it sounds like most people don't want me to do this project. Unfortunately, a few of my neighbors that were in favor didn't feel comfortable speaking. And I can understand with the animosity that was given out tonight that that might be intimidating to some people. But the front courtyard, I guess I'd, I'd be open to modifying that. I don't know what that looks like, but sure.
Okay. The, this is the extent of the drawings that we have on this project, and we can discuss this later, but it's a pretty limited, and I understand you've got to go through significant documentation of this improvement. I don't even see demo plans. I don't know how you knew what to demo. I guess you just tore everything out. I'm not making a joke.
It's for real.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but, so you don't have any, I mean, I'm, I'm used to reading plans, you know?
Sure.
That's what I do. And it was difficult for me to get a handle on the before and after, you know? Maybe it's because I'm not seeing as-built or demo in this, in this plan set. Am I just missing that, or?
No, the, well, the as-built is the existing floor plan there, but the gray areas were added to the as-built floor plan to show where the additions were proposed. And you're correct, there isn't a specific demo plan because the whole thing was getting gutted and.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for now.
Commissioner McCann, did you have questions while they're up there?
Yes.
Please.
So regarding the party walls.
Yeah, but that, I mean, yeah.
Regarding the, the party walls that you exposed to your neighbors.
Yes, sir.
Did you approach them about getting a party wall agreement? Sounds like there's supposed to be some kind of an agreement regarding what to do on shared party walls.
Well, actually, it's a double-framed construction. So the neighbor has their two-by-four wall, and I have my own two-by-four wall. So any extension of the structure coming out, you have to maintain the same two walls. So there's no connection between the structures at all. There's approximately an inch to an inch and a quarter gap between the two structures. The only place they really are tied together is at the roof, where the roof meets wall. So 141's roof meets my framing above their, their, so their, their joists rest on top of their, on top of their two-by-four wall.
But I understand that, I understand that. But you must recognize that exposing the walls of your neighbors how you did is not a sound or acceptable practice.
I completely agree with you.
So whether it's two independent structural walls or not, so, and, I mean, I've just never seen the condo complex torn up like this, to be honest. I mean, never, ever. What made you think that any of that was acceptable?
Again, I apologize for getting carried away. And, and, and it just, it, it, it just, it morphed into going, and it just kept going. And I admit, it was a big mistake, and I would never do that again.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Commissioner Prescott Loeffler.
I'm going to try.
Thank you.
It's hard for me not to have a question, I think. I'm going to go along with my seatmate here about the resolving the compliance issues. Seems like there's quite a few. And at the same time, you have demoed this project, and it's empty, and it's a shell, which is unfair to your neighbors. We've, I've been next to a construction, and it's, it's very hard to, you know, look at that every day. And we want to do, or my comments would be to you, and maybe you can respond, is that to get this project done, what's it going to take? And the comments that we heard tonight was the balconies, the compliance issues, the privacy, and the noise. The reverse floor plan, you know, that's done often, but it, it seems like the areas on the outside are encroaching your neighbors and possibly that angled balcony is also, to me, very awkward as far as a visual. So what, when you say you're willing to compromise, exactly how far are you willing to go to get this project finished so that your neighbors have a finished project and you're moved in?
Well, to address the timeliness of getting it built, if we have to go through a whole redesign, it could be like this for another year and a half. I, I don't know, because if I have to go through the whole process all over again, it, it's going to look like it's going to look until we get approved plans. If the second floor deck seems awkward at an angle, if, if the, if the general consensus is to make it square, I'm happy to make it square. As far as the front deck goes, tonight was really the first night I heard some sort of a complaint about that. I'm not sure exactly why that's a huge concern, but I'm, I'm, I'm not, it's not my, it's not in my head, it's in someone else's head. So I don't know. I, it wasn't clear to me what the major concern on that was.
Are you willing to reduce the footprint of that ocean view side balcony?
I'm sorry?
Are you willing to reduce the footprint of the ocean side balcony? The one that has the awkward slant?
Yes, I am, I'm willing to do that. If, 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 if we have to hold it back two feet from the 145 and square that off all the way across, it would be approximately four feet, six inches wide.
And is that the original footprint?
No. The original footprint was eight feet all the way across. A four-foot wide balcony means you can go stand out there, but you can't sit out there on a table.
So that, that would kind of eliminate some of the noise considerations, because there wouldn't be dining out there necessarily.
Okay, thank you.
Was that the prepared?
That's it.
Commissioner Crandall.
I'll hold mine till discussion.
Got it. Gary?
Same.
Okay. I kind of have a, it's a loose question, but I, I want to try and have a meeting of the minds with you if I can on the area you live. It, it seems to me what I'm hearing and what I'm reading in, in, in the concerns is that the original builder configured the units specifically the way they are configured to achieve a purpose. Do you, would you agree with that?
Not knowing what his described purpose was, it'd be hard for me to comment on that.
Well, I think, I think your neighbors have, have done that, to maximize privacy, reduce noise, and provide enjoyment of the patio space. That that was the intention of the builder, to configure it in a way that every unit was treated the same and had the same benefits. That, that's what I'm really pulling away from all of this, that the, if I zoom out, and what I, what I'm hearing from your neighbors is you're violating that principle. You're being selfish. And I think that's at the heart of this, that I think they're willing, they want to see, and I'm sure they want to see this project done too. And I'm sure, they would like to see, you know, you also enjoy the property, but I think they want to feel like it was fair. And I understand, but if, from your perspective, you're thinking, well, this is a, a beautiful location, I want to maximize the benefit that I have for my property. But the process that that went, that you went through then began to spill over into the, what the master builder intended. And now I think that issue of fairness is what people are responding to. And I think what one of our, one of the women that served on the architectural board, you know, they, they're trying to recognize that, you know, some of these have got away from us, and it's, we don't want to, just because it was done in the past, we don't want to see it again. And we run in that into the city, too. We do have people come to us and say, I can show you five locations where this has been approved before. And we don't, we, we try and make it, you know, clear, those, we're not obligated by those past decisions. This is now. So I think that's the, that's what I'm, the mindset I'm in, and I'm wanting to communicate that to you to see if you agree with that, and if you can under, if you can see that perspective.
Yes, I do completely understand what you're, you're getting at.
So.
But I also, yeah, also, secondarily, I have worked in multifamily high-rise where they've completely changed floor plans, and it's never been a problem, because the original floor plan was kind of clunky and awkward. The interior space of the structure was kind of awkward and kind of clunky. So the reconfiguration of the structure was based on what we felt was the most, the best use of the space. Knowing that I'm 61 years old and I have failing joints, I don't really want to be climbing stairs the rest of my life, and I wouldn't mind having my master bedroom on the bottom floor. So part of the reasons I'm, we're doing this is so that we have some living space on the bottom floor so that we can actually age out in the structure. Having the kitchen on the second floor provides a nice space. My wife really doesn't like a lot of sunlight coming into the structure.
I'm not really wanting to get the justification, I'm just trying to make sure you understand where we might be coming from.
I, I completely understand where you're coming from.
Fair enough. That's it. Okay. All right. I think that unless anybody else, anything else, I think I want to think, yes?
I want to comment. You're talking about privacy and, and how we're, we're affecting the privacy. The neighbor that has the largest complaint with privacy in 145 has a balcony off the back of their home that may be cantilevered out. It's attached to the neighbor on his north. Both of these balconies, the railing extends beyond the privacy wall. So those two have less privacy than we're providing with our current design. We've redesigned this back deck. I mean, having to change the back deck will pretty much ruin the livability or usability of that deck space.
Can we just nail this down? What are you, what is the square footage that you're proposing right now for your back deck? What's the dimensions of it?
Four and a half on one side and approximately eight feet on the other side, and approximately 21 feet wide.
Twenty fun, okay, so it's 21 by four and a half by eight and a half?
Yeah.
That's a full width.
A full width, okay. And what's the original?
Was six feet by nine feet, I think. It was eight-foot sliders, and it slightly expanded on either side, so it was roughly 54 square feet.
Okay.
And we, that's why we had presented the board that shows how many other units, and I had expanded all the way from wall to wall on the upper floor before.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And I want, again, thank you all, everybody, for being here tonight. Do we have any questions of staff? So can I close the public hearing? Are we good?
I have a question for staff.
Commissioner McCann.
City attorney, there was a statement that the structure was going to stay in its existing condition until there's an approval. Would the city be involved in, in saying, enforcing somebody to close it up and not leave interior walls of neighbors exposed to the elements? Do you see what I'm getting at?
That might be a, that might be a Jonathan's question.
I think that if Jonathan could address that, I, I know there was a stop-work order done and.
Yeah, so I can partially address it. This is, this comes really down to our building official. I do know, I am aware that our building official has already worked with the applicant related to the interior wall portion and addressing those concerns, so permitting a, a scope of work that would put that into a safer condition. So certainly, we could look at permits to address safety, weathering, elements of that sort that don't result in kind of the, a final product. And, and so, yes, interim steps could be made prior to a final certificate with occupancy level product being finished.
Okay, so, but if the, so the building official is aware, so he could say, hey, you have 30 days to do X, Y, Z, because this is in an unacceptable, unacceptable condition. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay. And then in event that they, the applicant did not comply with that, then I assume you would refer that to the city attorney's office?
Yeah, our, our building department will work in conjunction with code compliance related to any timelines. And, and if there was ongoing non-compliance, then, then yes, the city attorney's office would be, become involved.
Okay. But it's not a case where until they get some approval, the neighbors are just literally to the wind as far as their exposure?
No, there, there could be interim measures to secure the neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Good. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up for discussion.
Okay.
Commissioner Crandall would like to lead off.
I've been involved in a lot of attached products, a lot of zero-lot line projects, condominium projects. And one thing I would like a response from both Jonathan and our city attorney is, we are not here to be arbiters between the homeowners association and the applicant. We have no control over what the homeowners association does as far as approval or disapproval. If we make a decision tonight, it is not final until the homeowners association has a final document says they've approved it, and it's legally presented to the building department. So we'd love to be arbiters and make everybody happy, but that's not our task. Our task is what seems like a reasonable thing to do with no guidelines or ordinances to follow. So I'm hesitant to refer to the homeowners association and try to sway them one way or the other. If we affect their answer, we're a little bit responsible for that answer, and we don't want to do that. That's totally up to the homeowners, the association, which the applicant is a member of. He's not a standalone entity, he's part of the group. So as far as the association goes, whatever we do here, you still hold the control over what the final solution is, not us. I think one thing we know about HOAs and not seeing things done properly and ignoring them, just in that condo down on the beach bluff, and the glass rails, the handrails, that would be one that I would suggest the railing should match, the railing of the entire. entire neighborhood. And the colors have to be selected by the association. And I'd like Jonathan and the city attorney to just comment if that is the right approach, that we kind of make any comments in a void away from what the homeowners association does, so we're not clouding their decision on one way or the other.
So, so your question would be, how do we structure our comments so that they could be standalone and not?
Yeah, I don't want to say, well, they should have done this. No, we don't want to, no.
Right.
It's totally their, their choice, and we have no sway in that conversation.
Okay, but to disagree that you want to make a recommendation.
If we want to get some kind of approval tonight, rather than postponing it, yeah, we better hash something out.
Was there a question for Jonathan, then?
It sounds like...
Is that the correct approach?
Yeah, so I would just say that I concur with the statements that Commissioner Crandall has made, that independent of a resolution being acted on this evening, the city municipal code requires HOA approval. It is common for there to be situations where revisions occur through the building permit process, and our permits team will then require updated approvals from the HOA. So this is, is a different process that we're in right now, but the same thing would go, where our permits team would need to see an updated approval from the HOA that matches what they are requesting a building permit for.
Yeah, the only thing, Bart, is I, in my mind, the sequence is, what I, from what I read, is the HOA has said, go get your development permit from the city, and then, and we need to see that before we do anything else.
That's not quite how it was worded, and I don't think that's what the attorney said.
That's what I was understanding it.
They haven't approved anything yet.
Well, the, what they, I think what they said is, we'd like to see the city review this and see what, if they would approve. So we have two things. We have a development permit, which is based on concepts and zoning, you know, findings of consistency with our general plan, zoning, and a few other things, which I'll get into that later, to get the development permit. Then, I, but I, again, I'm just, my interpretation, if they get that, which is what this hearing's about, then they will reconsider their, their plan as they've updated it.
But that, we shouldn't base anything we do on what they're doing.
No, we're not. I'm just saying, we're at the step of the development permit, in order to get the building permit, which, which we have not, we're not involved in that, you know, the, that's what I'm, I'm just saying, the applicant's got, is going to take the outcome of tonight, take it back to the HOA, try, you know, secure their approval, to then bring that back to the city for the building permit. So we're, we're not involved in the building permit, we're not involved with the HOA does, but my understanding is, we're here today to make a decision on a development permit, and we need to make some findings. We need to make about five of them. And I, and I'm having a problem with a couple of them. So that's where I was, I think that's what you're trying to say. We can, we don't need to maybe necessarily focus in on the, the architecture, the design, and things of that nature. We can maybe not comment on that, but focus on the five findings that we need to make.
Okay, probably a way to look at it, I think...
But I'm open to whatever my colleagues want to do.
We don't have guidelines, just some, some good general architectural approaches that would be consistent with the neighborhood, but that shouldn't sway the homeowners association. If they don't want a balcony, they don't approve balcony.
Yeah, well, I, I think if I could chime in.
Yeah, please, this is discussion.
That's unavoidable.
You okay with him chiming in under time?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think it's unavoidable for us to even, you know, think that it's not going to have some impact. I mean, we're, this, to me, this is an entitlement review.
Correct.
It's not a, you know, building in safety.
Correct.
Oh, I agree with that.
And even though we disagree with the, the sequence, it is what it is, right? And so we're hoping, let me just finish, so we're hoping that we can help move this thing along in a reasonable way. And so, you know, what I think is, we should consider the comments that we heard from the public, and we should consider, to some degree, and we should consider what we think is architecturally sound in terms of this entitlement.
That's kind of what I'm trying to avoid, because...
Yeah, but what else are we going to do?
This was, well, that's the problem.
That's exactly the problem.
The homeowners association is totally in control.
Right.
And if...
Go ahead. Let's make a whole discussion. I don't think you can sit here and make an argument that gives ammunition to the applicant to use against the home, the HOA board. Because even if you give him entitlements, he will go back and say, look, I got these entitlements, they've already given me all this approval, now all you guys got to do is just kind of approve it. But it, it does have specifics and things that we've looked at that he can do, unless you're going to say, okay, move this back here, and I don't want to do that. This whole thing is blank backwards, right? I've been on this board now for four and a half years. I've never seen, and I disagree with whoever the zoning administrator was that kicked it up to us, because this is not ripe for the planning commission. The CCNRs here say they establish an architectural committee which must approve further construction or alteration of the original improvements to the community. You know, and that talks further about adjust, you know, building within your adjusted, building, you know, the walls. And I think SS, or CCNRs tend to be more conservative than the cities, so I would say there's, you're talking about a conservative organization, because you're in a homeowners association, versus a city, which might be a little more liberal based on just their general building codes. Not necessarily, but I think it's out of balance. And the other thing, the board sent us a letter from their barrister. You know, they're already talking about litigation. Why do we want to get the city involved in this if they don't get first their HOA approval?
Well...
It really is the cart before the horse.
Question.
And we should send it back to the HOA.
I'm not disagreeing with any of this stuff.
We should send it. I don't want to do anything on this until the HOA tells me that they're okay with it.
Well, a question for Jonathan. You know, what impact does our disapproval or approval have on the entitlements? Are they free to basically go to, you know, they can go to the building department, but doesn't the HOA in the end also have to approve the entitlement?
Yes, so the city's municipal code requires HOA approval prior to issuance of building permits. So if you were to take action on an entitlement this evening, they still would need to go to the HOA to get approvals from the HOA prior to submitting for the building permit or having a building permit reviewed and approved.
Okay, so a possible solution, aside from just, you know, washing our hands of this thing, is to maybe focus on the question of this floor flip. Because the HOA, and here's the reason, is they're party walls, right? Well, what they're talking about is, you know, noise coming through a sound wall, right? Whatever quality of construction that, that happens to be, the, the sound is still coming through. Whether you've got a bedroom with a blaring TV, which, you know, if you're at my mom's house, you know, that's the noisiest room, right? Or a small kitchen, which is, doesn't have much of congregants, you know, it's got people cooking, whatever. And to me, it's reasonable to accept, in terms of an entitlement, this floor switch. If...
We don't, we don't have any authority to do that.
We don't have any authority to force the C, the CCNRs or the HOA architectural board to accept it, a kitchen on the bottom floor or the top floor, if that's their objection, CCNR.
Yeah, but if...
Because anybody who lives in a, you know...
So we don't have to, well, I guess what you're saying is, we don't, we don't have to do anything tonight.
Yes.
We can just deny a review?
I think the attorney would say, we do have to make some approval, so that can go back, and building department can sit there waiting. Honestly, as an architect, you've been in it before, we would never get this far if we were doing a project in, not HOA. You get that resolved, absolut, no.
We don't need to talk.
Public hearing's closed.
You get approval, a complete, full approval before you start working drawings.
Well, and certainly before you start demo.
Exact, oh, and way before demo. So they took the negotiations away from the homeowners association by jumping in the way they did. So now they've got to deal with it. And I wanted to jump in, I mean, my whole thing is, we don't want to get between the association and the applicant, period.
So I, I agree with the statement that we do need to make some decision here. I think that the, your, your options are in the staff report, as they always are. If you, your, your decision should be, of course, made in terms of the required findings, or if you want additional information from staff, that we can continue the item. Or, of course, if you're going to deny it as set forth in the staff report, we would come back with a denial resolution. Jonathan, you're looking at me, if you, okay.
Can we get a definition of denials when we do some things like conditional use permits? They have to wait a year. That's not the case here, is it?
There's, there's a distinguishing factor in the code related to whether it's denial with prejudice or without. And so we would make that delineation, or even provide that option to you, if there, that was the direction that the commission wanted to go.
Delay the project, that's not our intention at all.
Well, yeah, but if we, if we do reject it with prejudice, for instance, which is, I think what you guys are suggesting, no, you're not.
Without.
Well, then it's, where it's, where it's going to be a big circle, because they're going to come back with some revisions.
Maybe not. We can, the only reason it came here...
The only reason it came here was because Adam chose that it was too sensitive to the public to be made at the zoning commission level. I'm thinking maybe it goes back to zoning commission and could stay there.
The ZA?
The ZA, yeah. Those, thank you. But the ZA, and let, let them handle it, and we can give some guidelines that, you know, it's probably a good idea, don't have a glass rail, it would be nice if you reduce the decks or whatever, but we wouldn't reference, reference it to the comments of the association, because they have full reign, and they can change their minds on anything that's even been discussed up till now.
So are you suggesting that we send it back to ZA?
Maybe. That's one, certainly one option.
Okay. You're suggesting something?
And I'm, well, I'm, I'm open to whatever we agree on.
So what if, what if we do this? What if we, we suggest, and Jonathan, you tell us if this is even an option for us, if we suggest that we send it back to ZA and, and maybe consider, you know, let's say, reducing the rear balcony and mimicking the handrail? And I think the angle is very unique, and maybe we, we go away from that, say, consider that, and consider not having the balcony on the front, because you're looking out over, you know, I mean, there's garages, but you are, it's something that's very unique in, in this, and let it go at that. Is that something we can do? Jonathan? Send it back?
My concern would be identifying a change in circumstances or information before sending it to the zoning administrator.
Well, we're getting rid of some tools.
So I, I'm hearing that one component is concern about the, the HOA having not yet approved the final version. So I think one, one avenue would be saying that obtaining final approval from the HOA of the proposed plans that have been changed since their last review with the HOA would change, again, going back to the original thought process that the city always goes through with regard to amendments, is, is there significant concern, et cetera? That that, having that in place would lessen the level of concern. I think that that then would create a, a reason to, to refer it in that direction. But I think there needs to be grounds for why there's a change in...
I, I feel uncomfortable just handing this back. I, I feel like that we need to set the context, and I think that's what you're trying to do, Commissioner Crandall, and I appreciate it. I, I want to just maybe take what you're trying to do and maybe put it in this context. We do admit, we do development permits here, but this really was, came to the counter as a administrator permit.
Correct.
And it, it came in, and the staffs, and the staff decided that it need, it wanted Adam to take, the zoning administrator to look at it. And then the community weighed in, and the zoning administrator basically said, you know, there's a lot of community value conversations here, concerns, and because it is a planned residential district that is prior to the establishment of a residential set of standards, they were not established when that PRD was built.
Well, every PRD has its own standards.
Well, these don't have, these do not have the...
They didn't write it in.
They don't have the objective building standards in their, in their code. So now the city is trying to become the, provide a role or a service to the, to the HOA, because there's a conflict there, and we're trying to say, well, then it falls back, if it's followed back on us, we're not going to look at their CCNRs, we're not going to look at that, we're not going to look at their rules, that's outside of our purview, we're going to look at what we normally look at. And those are, and I'll, I'll tell us what those are, tell you what those are. There are five things we're going to look at. Is it consistent with the general plan? Is it consistent with the zoning for this type of residential? Is it consistent with the city design guidelines?
It doesn't have to be.
Okay, we, we have discretion there.
There's an error there.
Okay. So Commissioner, so Brandon, Commissioner Crandall's disputing whether that is a finding we need to make, which would be C on your staff report. The next one is the proposed development not detrimental to public health and safety, welfare, and interest. And then the last one, and this is the one that I think we probably can't, we're, we're circling around, is the last one, which is the proposed project is in character and compatible with the properties in the neighborhood. And that's the final finding. And I think that's where I, I sense the diff, the conversation on both sides of me. Over here, I'm sensing, look, that's, that, that character determination's up to the, the HOA. We don't want to be involved in that. And yet, we're sort of, it's forced on us in a way, because of the process that we're, where we, where we at. And it's kind of a catch-22. In order for him to get his, back to the HOA for the approval that he can get to bring in, back to get the building permit, the HOA is looking to the city to, should this go forward at all? And so we would, so really, we're acting in effect and...
What you're saying is...
To do that, to do that administration, to make that finding.
You do this to a date uncertain, until they can work it out.
Well, that's what I was going to say, because this changes just what you said. The attorney said they, they don't have an application for this, a new one. They don't have, to date, an application has not been submitted. That's their legal representative. They don't have an application for this.
For a building permit.
So they don't have an application for their architectural HOA committee or the board. So I don't know that... Again, I go back to, it's not our job to try to go the in-betweens. It, this is just not a, it's not right for us to see it. We've never seen this before. It needs to go back to the HOA. We can continue this until they bring back their HOA approval, and then we'll look at what they need. I want, I just want to open the public hearing for Brandon to respond to your question.
Why?
Because I want to understand if you're correct. I, because I read in the staff report that, in fact, this went, and we heard testimony, this went before the architectural review, they denied it, it was appealed to the board, the board approved it.
Conditionally approved it, and that was a different version.
Right, a different version.
Than what we're seeing.
And now they say they have no application.
They conditionally approved a different version.
This is their...
This is their representative here.
Right, a different version. So does that mean—if it's changed, that the procedure—if you have an administrative permit that you're trying to adjudicate, if there's a delta between what the HOA saw and what they're submitting to you, is it appropriate, then, to say, "Look, there's a delta. You've changed it since you last put it in front of your HOA. We're not—we're not going to give you any administrative review until you go back and have this update reviewed by your HOA"? That's, I think, what you're saying.
They don't have an application before the HOA right now. In other words, whatever they had before.
What they said is that the only thing that's changed is this ridge of the balcony with the guard—with the glass garden.
Their representative didn't say that.
Yeah, he did.
The attorney?
Yeah.
The attorney of the HOA.
But I think—
See, I—we need to stay clear of the—really, I think we just need to—we can continue it, get the HOA's approval, then we'll consider it again. What's so bad about that?
Just for that one change, the glass garden.
Yes, because it should—it should be—because this sets a precedent, at least in the last four and a half years. Come and get your entitlements first, and then get your HOA approval.
If—I just want to ask you a procedural question. If—because they did get this in front of the board. It was approved—a version—was approved by the board. That version was brought to the city. Time passed. The applicant made changes from what the board saw. And while it was here—is it here? And what would you do when that happens? Would you say, "Oh, this is no longer what the board has—what the HOA approved. You've changed it, and you're asking us to give you an administrative review. We're not doing that. We're sending it back. You need to get your revisions re-reviewed by HOA"? Is that—is that the process?
There—I'm going to differentiate. I think that that would be best practice, in particular on the applicant, but it is not a code requirement to, again, have HOA approval prior to consideration of entitlements.
Could I point something out?
Your turn. Your turn.
Let me point something out.
Yeah.
The revision to the balcony, I think—correct me if I'm wrong—was made at the suggestion of the Z.A.
Correct.
So like, the Z.A. said, "Hey, you should pull this back," so he did, and that threw him—now he's—now—that's the difference between what we're seeing and the HOA conditionally approved.
Right.
I would like to weigh in on a few items.
You've been patient. Please, go ahead. Commissioner McCann.
See, now I lost my train of thought.
Chair, I believe we reopen the public hearing.
Yes, I'm going to close the public hearing again, so we can continue with our discussion.
I don't—Bart, why would you want to throw it back to the Z.A.? He's already determined that, well, this is controversial enough. There's enough public opinion. It should be considered by the—by the planning commission.
Since we have no grounds for making any recommendations, if somebody can show me a document that says we have grounds to make architectural revisions in a project that has an HOA, I'd be happy to reconsider.
If—if—we don't have any jurisdiction over that, then the Z.A. probably wouldn't either, would they?
He would just say, "Get me HOA approval," and we'll move on, which is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Or—I mean, it could come back here if we wanted to postpone till they get that.
Okay.
But it's not for us to determine whether—it—I think even in the document, Jonathan, even when we get that, there's a caveat that we aren't saying it's absolutely correct or approved, or—I mean, that kind of pussyfoots around the fact we aren't taking responsibility for that approval.
Correct. I think our—
If I could just address a few different questions. So when I was discussing in the staff report about the differences between the plans that were originally submitted to the city and the plans that we're reviewing tonight, I want to make it clear that that was not intended to mean that you guys need to deliberate on those specific changes or make an opinion independent of what the HOA decides at building permit issuance. The entitlement process is almost separate entirely from what the HOA's opinion is on how the design should be. And the Z.A.'s suggestions at his hearing were merely suggestions and not anything that has any bearing on the city's opinions about the design. We actually are agnostic to the design of the project. What we're really deliberating on tonight is whether this project meets the findings for the development permit. And then I attempted to author the resolution in a manner that absolves the city of that responsibility of, "This is the design that we are responsible for." It is clearly in the conditions of approval that anything that is approved tonight theoretically still needs to go to the HOA for review, which—if this was not a discretionary application, the staff would determine whether those changes were significant or not from the original submittal.
Okay, since you asked him that question.
Sure, sure.
Since—you know, basically what he's saying is that we have, within our purview, an evaluation of the—really, it's that last item. It's the compatibility, right? And we can—we can have an opinion—
Right.
—because that's basically what it is—about whether this design is compatible
Right.
—with the community. We have the public's comments, right?
Yep.
And so we know what their concerns are. So I would suggest that we can make an architectural —or give an architectural opinion of whether this is compatible. And it doesn't necessarily just have to be the architecture. I guess we can say—if we don't think it's compatible, because a kitchen is adjacent to a bedroom with the party wall, somebody could say—I don't think it's—it's relevant, but somebody on the commission here could say that. So what I would suggest—and all I can do—and I don't mean to interrupt—you know, what you're training us out there—but is that, you know, I'm willing to make a statement about the compatibility of this design, regardless of what HOA does. And send it back to them. Send it back to them.
Yeah, but the HOA, at least my HOA, that's all they want, is to know what your architecture is on the outside. So they are—
They already overruled their own committee. They already overruled their own committee.
Who?
The HOA, whatever.
HOA— You mean the board? —words come and go. One side is election. Let the board do it again. Let the board do it again. But it's the HOA's authority to approve the exterior of this project, not for us.
They don't have to go along with what we said.
Not for us to give their opinion. It's for them to do it first.
That's what they're asking for us to do. I think it's whoopee.
Okay, well—I'm going to—just so we get things going, I'll make a motion that we should continue this until we get the approval from the HOA, so that this is the usual way that we do things. And so I'll make—I'll put that motion on the table. Okay. We're going to have discussion on this. I just want to frame it that we've got a motion to continue the hearing from Commissioner McCann. It's been seconded by Commissioner Crandall. I want to—I want to not get into substitute—I don't want to offer substitute motion. I'd like to just offer discussion on this. I'm not going to support the motion simply because my understanding is, this happens all the time. Applicants come to the city for entitlement. This is—and for this kind of a project, it's administrative. We never see it.
I've been here 14 years and haven't seen it once.
We don't see them. We don't see administrative applications.
We shouldn't be seeing this.
However, within the process of the staff review, they're asking for us to review it. Maybe that's never happened since you've been here, but they're—
Under what authority?
Yeah.
What are you basing—
Let the HOA take the heat of all their residents.
The zoning code— —gives the city the responsibility to provide that administrative review. And then it's within the discretion—that's right. And it's within discretion of the staff to determine at what level that occurs. The staff, at that level, decided, "We're going to put this to the zoning administrator." That's—the code.
What's that have to do with the authority of the HOA? The HOA authority is in state law. They have the purview.
Okay.
You're—you're kind of mixing two different things.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. I feel like the building permit is the actual permit to construct. The order to get that, the applicant will need to go back to the HOA and get their approval on it—
Right.
—and bring it back to the city.
I know, but we shouldn't be setting a precedent.
Do they need any approval from us? No.
No, but this is not a for-the-building permit. This is for—at a higher level of, "Is it compatible with city standards?" That's all this is. And it's normal—it's normal and routine.
This sets up to where you can come and get your building permit.
No.
I mean, you can come and get your entitlements at the city, and then I'm going to take it back to my HOA. And in a little way—
Architectural review zone, yes. If we were in a special district—
And I think that's wrong.
Yes, we aren't. This is a standalone community that has taken on the responsibility of doing architectural review of their projects, and we are saying, "No, we want that authority." And I'm saying, "Well," and I understand Jonathan saying, you know, "Well, this is how we do it." The other cities I've been with at first design, they want to know, "What does your association think about it?" And everything is based on what the association says.
And again, just to interrupt, I would remind you that they did that, but then the Z.A. said, "Hey, we suggest to make this tweak." So they're kind of in the process, and at the city's suggestion, they made the tweak.
So did we make a mistake there? And—
Probably.
So should we erase the mistake and say, you know, this isn't—
The HOA says they don't have an application.
Sure it's compatible. No, it'd be very easy to say.
So what—that gives us an option to say, "Let's bring it back to the Z.A. like we're talking about, but without the changes, and it's compatible."
My motion is to talk about the Z.A. It's saying, "Applicant—"
Yeah, but it's just going to—
—get your HOA approval.
It's just going to come back to us. I mean, I think—I don't think it's going to be—
It doesn't have to if he's got HOA approval and whatever the—
Once it's got HOA approval, it's a rubber stamp.
Then it's done at the staff level.
No, it's not, because it goes back to either the Z.A. or us. So at some point, we're going to have to deal with it.
Then the Z.A. would approve it, maybe, and it wouldn't come to us. But I don't think we—
It didn't. Because I can guarantee they're going to make assumption here. I'm not going to say the HOA is going to make changes, but they are. So what comes back here is not going to look like what we're seeing tonight.
Well, you're right. We don't know. I don't agree with the motion, but I could be overruled.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion, Commissioner Prescott-Loffler?
With—I just want your collective wisdom here, because what my focus is, for the sake of the community, that this shell is exposed, and for the sake of the project, which is the shell exposed, which is the quickest way to the next step, is what I'm trying to get to, so that— —so that the community can be made whole and the project can go forward.
Can I kind of challenge your assumption there? Your underlying assumption is that if this project gets approved as quickly as possible, that that shell is magically going to be closed up quickly.
Oh, it's not.
Okay, it's not, because chances are, they have to start and complete working drawings with the architect and the structural engineer, and then go through building plan check. So the quickest way to get that kind of in a safer, better condition is through the—through code enforcement. That's the quickest way. But even—approval or no approval, it's still going to be a long time—
Before.
—unless code enforcement steps in and gets gets stuck on—
And they can do that.
They can do that now.
Completely independent.
Yeah, but they can do that now, which should be done.
It's still going to be an ice room.
Yes.
It'll be safe. A safe ice room.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A watertight ice room, hopefully.
It's—I'm looking at the community that has lived with this, and I'm looking at a project that's not finished. We've got to move it along. Doing—the code. We've got to—we got to take it to the next step, so that this can eventually be finished.
Cameron, I'll do one thing and maybe amend a second, whatever we see here. I'd like the city attorney to put you on the spot, since we can't seem to figure it out. We want to protect the city from influencing either the applicant or the HOA in their negotiations between each other. We want it to continue that as soon as that agreement is made, it can progress. And what do you see as possibly the best way to do that?
Well, I do want to comment that I do caution the commission about conditioning a continuance on HOA approval. It's not required under the code, as we have discussed. And I—Jonathan's looking at me again, so do you want to jump in about the quickest way to get this moving?
I will finish your thought, and then I do have a thought as well.
No, go ahead.
So what I'm hearing—and this isn't to presume that everyone is aligned on this, but there is an interest in the HOA resolving their final decision. The origin of this item, going back to the beginning, is that these planned residential developments, not all of them have development standards. We have a code that is a permissive code. So staff typically looks at, "What type of addition are you allowed to make under the code? What type of modifications to your building are you allowed to make under the code?" There's a void in this instance. And so we're starting from an interpretation that says, "Given that void, we think that this should go through a discretionary process." I think an alternative could be for the planning commission to say, "We disagree with the origin interpretation there, and—and we believe that deference should be given to the HOA, so long as any modifications that are made are, of course, within the footprint of the property." Obviously, they can't do modifications beyond their own property line. But I think that that could be an option on the table for the commission if there's interest in not having this item go back and forth between the bodies.
That's what I was looking for, because I would offer that as an amendment if Gary would agree with that.
So what would the amendment— It would not require HOA approval?
No, no. He's saying— It's—it's basically a process—we're basically saying, "This was brought to us by the staff per code," and that's where I was originally going—you know, talking against this motion. Jonathan's saying, "What we could do instead of making the five findings is we basically take issue with the staff's interpretation of the code and say, 'You know, staff, you made a—you made a discretionary decision to move this through. We're suggesting you don't do that, and you send it back to the HOA and get them to work it out before bringing it back.'" So we're really, in essence, it's a process—we're suggesting a new process.
Didn't our attorney just say we shouldn't do that?
No, she didn't say that. I didn't think.
We shouldn't put the caveat in there that it should go—we couldn't mandate that it go back for our approval.
Correct. Correct. I think, based on what I'm hearing, the recommendation would likely be to continue it and have maybe staff try to work with the applicant and the other parties to try to work something out. But don't—I can't recommend that you condition it on approval from the HOA—the continuance.
So we could give them time to reconsider their application, and if they choose to go back and get it approved by the HOA, then that's on them.
To continue this item—
And that staff and the applicant?
And perhaps the HOA find some kind of agreement?
Correct.
Second. Yes, understood.
I'd second that.
Is that agreement basically to resubmit the plan to the HOA and have them review it, and—
Yeah, but we're not stating—
We're not dictating that.
That's up to them.
They have to come to agreement.
Okay.
How they accomplish that is—
Up to them.
—between them.
Yeah, I like that. I like that idea, is that it's up to the—it's up to staff to work it out with the applicant and whoever needs to, the community, and then bring it back to us. Then it's—it's not said, but it's implied. And I think that's good enough. I mean, these people are here, right? And I think that's probably going to be the quickest way to get it—to get it worked out.
All right.
Putting us in the driver's seat.
I don't know if we'd—with the understanding that staff will continue working on the process of protecting the property during that process.
We highly encourage the staff to refer this to compliant—co-compliance.
It's not a mandate, but we're—
Yeah.
Putting it in writing that they should get on that.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
That part of the motion?
We, do we need that to be part of the motion?
I think that should be, sure.
Okay.
That was just a comment.
Okay, well.
They know it.
Okay.
All right, so let's.
Chair.
Yeah.
Can I discuss a few other things?
Is it in context with the motion?
Well, it's in context with the project, not the motion specifically. But before we take a vote.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay. And some of this may or may not be applicable if we're kind of kicking it back, but I just want to state it and have us thinking about it. One is, I guess, if we're gonna make this motion, do we want to weigh in and give some suggestions of what we see relative to compatibility and not? Because to the applicant, you know, so that they could consider that. In case it comes back to us, they'll already have some of our feelings. So that's something for you guys to think about.
I think as a commissioner, you can just express that. You can just express that yourself.
Okay.
You don't need to put it in a form of a motion.
No, no, I'm not saying in a form of a motion. I'm saying, in discussion, before a motion, say, hey, these are our, you know, relative to compatibility or not.
This would be your opportunity to do that.
Okay, great. Well, one is, so a couple additional things. I mean, there's been a lot of discussion about flipping the property up and down, and noise concerns and stuff like that. And I honestly don't know how I feel about that. But they are extending the party wall with another property. And I know how I feel about that, which is not good. That it's not compatible, to be extending the party wall and giving them more square footage of party wall that they didn't previously have.
Without a mutual agreement, right?
Without, sure, without, yeah, without a mutual agreement. You know, they're talking about, well, I want to get, you know, the balcony over here, but then if I do this, it'll only have so much space, and I won't be able to put a table. That's a function of how far you're building out your conditioned living space. So if you pull, if you hold that back, you can have, you know, potentially a bigger balcony behind, you know, a certain railing location. So that's a function of them trying to put however many square feet into the property. And another thing is that, you know, we can look at this thing, there's two additions at two different ends, and they're not the same. So we could separate them out and say, okay, well, how do we feel about the addition in the courtyard and filling in the courtyard end versus the view end? And, you know, all the stuff that's going on back there. So I just wanted to point those things out. Relative to my comments, I think your railing should be compatible. You know, you shouldn't have a glass railing if nobody else has one. I think potentially the balcony should not be full width. I'm unclear as to what other ones are or aren't. I don't know how the HOA weighed in on that. I personally don't see an issue with the balcony over by the garage. But I do think that if you're pushing too far, you should consider that. But if you want a certain-sized balcony, it doesn't mean you push your balcony out further. It means you pull your house back from what you're proposing. So those are my thoughts. And I will support the motion.
Okay.
And I'll just say, I agree with those comments. I think those are reasonable.
Okay, hopefully those are helpful. Sorry, we can't really take comments right now from the audience, I apologize. Any other comments anyone else wants to make? Are you clear on the motion, Jonathan? You don't, do you need it restated, or you?
I do have one question.
Yes.
Related to the process moving forward. So the position that I had, or the alternative I had mentioned was essentially an interpretation from the planning commission saying that in this PRD, modifications broadly should be permitted. And staff can broadly allow for those, so long as the HOA signs off on whatever element is proposed. If that's the general direction, then there's not a need for this.
Does this make a precedence for every unit in the property? Which is a big burden on the HOA.
So, well, we're not, there's, it doesn't sound like there's an appetite to make a motion to approve this project. So in that interpretative route, that would be a continuance with direction to staff on that interpretation of the code. And for the applicant to get updated approvals on their permits from their HOA, and to begin, again, the building permit process. That avenue would not entail returning to you. I think the only avenue that needs to return to you is if you want to establish or have discussion over whether or not modifications to these cookie-cutter-style buildings should be permitted by the city, and if there should be certain limitations, et cetera, of those. So I think that I would like to see a delineation of whether or not you want this to return to the commission after review by the HOA.
Once again, they're in a contract. If the HOA wants to go all Swiss chalets throughout the entire neighborhood, they can, without us having any say in the matter.
So I think the answer is, no, we don't need, we don't need to come back here.
Okay.
Yeah. If it doesn't have to, I don't want to come back.
Yep. There you go. I mean, I think the root of this is the staff is not comfortable making the decision, and it keeps getting escalated within the staff ranks. And it finally got kicked to us. They're asking us for direction. And I, I want to make sure we're clear, though. And that's why I'm asking, are you, are you clear, Jonathan, on the direction you're getting? But I want to make sure my colleagues are clear, that the staff is trying to do their job. And in their, in their, in their way of interpreting this application, it kept getting escalated to the point to where it came to us for assistance in interpreting.
I'll give you my interpretation of why I'm not comfortable with that approach. Staff works with the public every day, and they want to make the public happy.
Mm-hmm.
And sometimes they work very hard and a lot of hours trying to arbitrate between groups or whatever. And I think in this one, that's a slippery slope. And I want to make sure that we aren't getting into the arbitration between the two parties.
Which we do every week, anyway.
We, we.
No, not with an HOA, that's the whole point.
You don't do it every week with an HOA.
We certainly get applicants.
Your statement, your statement was arbitrating between the community.
Well, this, this particular community has an HOA. That is a contract between the two parties that we are not a party to. If it was a overlay district or something, everything's casting.
Then we need to just make sure we don't even mention the HOA.
Oh, exactly, that's kind of been my whole point.
And Jonathan, when you recited, you restated it, you mentioned the HOA. We're saying, work it out with the community.
The parties.
Parties that are involved.
Parties involved.
So that, that's implied, again. We don't need to make a decision here. And beyond that, we don't even want to see it again. Right? I mean, that's what we're suggesting. It doesn't need to come back to us.
We would prefer it, but I don't think we can mandate that we won't see it again.
Well, I mean, that's our suggestion.
Only if it were to violate city code, right? Then it would kick up, if there was some major.
Yeah, if you wanted to exceed a height limit or anything.
Yeah, like three stories or.
Yeah, because it meets all the zoning.
Right. It, as far as I'm concerned, it meets A through D. And E is the only area where there's any discussion at all. So what I hear you guys saying is, in all fairness, you're fine making findings A through D.
I believe that's correct.
That's irrelevant.
And I don't want to make finding on E, we don't think that's, we don't think the discretionary review process at this, at this juncture needs to consider E.
Well.
That's kind of what I'm hearing. Because this is what the staff, this is where the staff is stuck, they're stuck on E.
You don't have the authority to. That's between them. If they, if they agree to something where it encroaches or is really visible from a public street, this is inside a planned community development. And they govern themselves as far as that particular issue is concerned. But certainly, lot sizes, they don't meet the underlying zone. They aren't big enough. The side yard setbacks aren't big enough. They specifically filed a site map that was, I don't know if it's on the deed. It would be on the deeds, I believe, also. Just like the member, the CCNRs are part of their grant deed. And when they bought the property, it's in there. When you get your title search, boom, you get a copy of the CCNRs. And it's there because that's the almighty document. Not us. But streets, safety, construction, yes, we are definitely involved.
The only thing I would disagree is if they decided that, you know, as a group, they were gonna build a hotel there. No, they couldn't do that.
That's right, because they've got a site that is.
They have to be within their zoning and the general plan.
They have to be within the lots. These are individual lots.
Right.
That would have to be new lot lines, new everything, rezoned, and yeah.
Right? So if lines are within the general plan and within zoning, it's okay. So that's all I'm saying. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to make sure that we have, we're supporting the staff in the process that they brought to us, which is, they're asking, they're saying, we think, we think we need to have a discretionary review for this, and it needs to make these five findings. And I think what I'm hearing you say is, no, we disagree with your interpretation of the code. That we don't need a discre, that if you do, you only need to regard general plan zoning and general city guidelines and health safety. That's it. We don't think we, in this case where there's an HOA, we need to evaluate the character and compatibility within the neighborhood. That's what I'm hearing.
I think you're getting too complex. I'm just saying, there's a process here. First, you go to your HOA, and you get the approval, period. Okay? Then if there's a problem.
You work it out.
To get the building permit, work it out.
We're not talking building permit, we're talking entitlements.
Sure, it's gonna eventually go to building permit. If he gets HOA approval, that allows him to go to get building permit.
What you just said.
Right.
But we're headed, we're steps above that right now.
I don't want to get there yet. Let him get there, he's the building official. He'll then build on their HOA approval, the plans that they present, and what they need. He knows the code, he knows the, if there's any problem between the HOA and him, he'll let us know.
And if I could weigh in, that was already part of the process. They already did it once, and then had the opportunity to do it again, and somehow it got to us, and can still go back and do it again. There was the original process of going to the HOA.
Yeah, that was followed.
I have to say, however many times I go back to the HOA, that's not our problem.
It's on his process.
They gotta work it out. And I think it's, in the HOA documents, 90 days? If the, if the HOA doesn't give them an approval or a denial.
So would you? Is your motion intended to say, they won't get no administrative development permit at all until they get an HOA approval? Is that what you're saying?
Didn't say that, but that's what the rules generally say. People come in with that first. We've never seen one backwards. That would be a terrible precedence to set it up where we start doing things like.
But again, our municipal code does not require that, just.
No, it would be strictly a policy rather than a code.
I mean, is it true, Jonathan, that you never see, at this level, something come in without? I mean, I guess in this case, it did come in with an HOA approval. It did initially, it did.
Correct.
So that was, that box was checked.
Not now, they don't have an application.
Well, not now, but it was when it came in.
It's not right.
So there's a process that still needs to be followed.
So what you're saying is, the box got unchecked.
That's right, we're interfering now.
So.
It's a private relationship between the HOA and the applicant.
I, if I could offer.
They can come to the city.
A scenario, just different community, Marblehead Coastal. We have denied some building permits after the HOA approved, because we have specific development standards, the city does, related to lot coverage or where you can have accessory structures, things of that sort. So the independence of review goes both ways. In this case, we don't have delineated standards related to allowing for additions. And so staff took a conservative approach to bring it through a public hearing process related to that, that we don't have our independent review standards in place. If the planning commission feels that in these PRDs, that have small lots, and there's not a lot of room to make modifications, if they feel that the best avenue for review forward would be for those determinations of small additions and alterations to projects be handled exclusively by the HOA, staff is amenable to that. We don't have a problem with that approach, but there isn't, there isn't a, this hasn't been discussed at this level previously. And this was a scenario that, as you can see, brought in a good amount of public concern, and that's, that's why it came to you. So a continuance that, with that direction, that the commission feels that the HOA determination should govern, and staff doesn't need to worry about the lack of separate development standards, gives us the direction that we need moving forward to address these types of permit applications that come in from PRDs.
Yeah, we'll go along with that if we're saying.
I think that's the right framing, because we're making a policy decision as part of this. And I want to be sure we're comfortable with that.
Quick question, mechanically, are we continuing it to a ZA hearing? We're not continuing it to come back to us, are we? What are we continuing it to do?
I don't know, that's, that's why I'm continuing this discussion till we get this baked properly. I still don't think we're there yet with the, with the right motion.
Based on what Jonathan just suggested.
Okay.
In terms of our ruling, if you want to call it that. We can include, Jonathan, correct me if I'm wrong, we can include that we don't need to see it again. Why not? Because we do that all the time. Designer view, that's basically what we're doing here.
And that, that really is a case, and that's just discretionary. It has no, they don't have to do it if they don't want, kind of thing.
True. Are you all comfortable with what Jonathan said as a matter of policy for these PRDs where they have these small lots that when an alteration, a modification, expansion, addition comes in, and the staff is trying to do their job of reviewing that? Are you guys okay with the policy of, hey, just let the HOA make the call, and you city just rubber stamp it?
That's not how it happens.
That's not what we're doing.
That's not how it happens.
We're just talking about this particular PRD, anyway.
Because, okay, well, I'm hearing that that's the policy implication of what you're saying. Is that if the, if, so what if the HOA does approve it, and then it comes back? What then?
And we rule on what they need, what they need approval for.
Huh?
Then we'll rule on what they need approval for. You won't have a document saying, we don't have any application before. They're just coming de novo before the planning commission. The HOA is saying they don't have an application for this project.
Okay, that's.
We can't disrespect them. He's got to go through the HOA process first.
So that's different.
You've got the HOA approval, this is insane.
They say you don't have an application.
That's why we don't want to get in that argument.
This is, yeah.
That's between you and them.
Yeah, I really don't want to get into a back and forth on this. I really feel like we're, we're not on the same page. There's two different issues here. There is the precedent, there's a procedure that the staff follows to review applications. And it can happen, as you mentioned, where the HOA approves it, they review it and say, well, this is not consistent with our zoning, we're not approving it.
Okay, I'll tell you what, where we're gonna go with that, then we're gonna deny it.
But there is no.
Because we can't make that fifth finding in the document. So you're going to a place where there is no option, it's a denial. I'll, do you want to?
That would be the cleanest.
That's where I'm, yeah.
Denial would be cleanest, just deny the whole thing.
And what is the, what is the implications of that, Jonathan?
I'm gonna, Jennifer, do you have any comments first?
I don't.
But for speed, for speed and just clarity of getting something done, that makes it harder, I believe.
That's why I'm worried about that.
But that's where you're going. I mean, it's either this way.
I just don't want to set, I just want, if we're gonna send a policy message to staff, to staff, I want to be sure we're doing it with eyes wide open, and we understand that that's what we're doing.
And that's what I've seen plenty of other cities do, that very thing.
Tell staff and the applicant to take care of it. We don't want to get involved in it.
If I could make a recommendation.
We don't necessarily have to get involved in it.
Recommendation, there, so what, there's a section of our code also that discusses interpretations, so the city planner can make minor interpretations, planning, pardon me, planning commission can make major interpretations. So what an optional motion could look like is something like continuing the item with direction to staff to work with the applicant on securing, you know, approvals that they need to continue in the building permit process, and to return to planning commission with a drafted interpretation related to how, the policy and procedure for the review of building permits that go through or that are coming from these planned residential developments.
Separate from this application.
That would be separate from this application, it would be just a policy document.
Yeah, because I'd like to bifurcate policy discussion from this action. Could we, in effect, so can, instead of continuing this hearing, and I, this is where we might need a city attorney's opinion, can we refer this item for interpretation to the city planner? We think this is a minor interpretation, and our, our decision is to refer it to, to the city planner for final, for, to make the final decision. You've heard our conversation, you can use that as part of your evaluation. And then, I, I just don't know where, with a public hearing, if we can, if that is a, if we can do that tonight, or if we need you guys to continue it, to give, come back with that resolution, or, you know, how we do this procedurally. But I'm thinking we refer this specific decision to the city planner, because our interpretation is that that's the proper place for it to be made. And then, second, we are open to the staff returning to us with a policy discussion regarding PRDs and how the cit, and how the city's discretionary review process should be designed, the, separate. Can we, is that, that's kind of what I would be, where I'm thinking.
Yeah, so, pardon me. Clarifying one thing, continuance doesn't necessarily mean that it has to come back. So if we did a continuance, that could be to a date uncertain, or we could table the item, either or. So I think those would be the procedural options. And then as far as the interpretation, I, I would say, take your pick. If you want to delegate that interpretation, to me, that's fine. But I would say, in that scenario, it wouldn't come back to the planning commission, so if you want to discuss it further, then the direction, the motion should be to table this item and, and use the discussion from tonight to guide drafting and interpretation. Again, just provide that clarity of whether you want that to be a city planner determination, or whether you want that to come back to you. And then we can use that framework to get this project to the finish line. They're separate, but then that would be the policy framework through which staff is looking at that. And what I'm hearing is that there's a, an appetite more so for the review to be handled at the HOA level.
Yeah, if you can summarize all that.
That's pretty long.
Into a motion.
How about if I would just change it to say, you know, we continue this if only the parties can't come to agreement.
Oh, that's interesting.
We're not mentioning any party specifically, but until all the parties can come into agreement.
But then in the end, it were the arbiters, which is what we're trying to avoid.
Well, the parties might never come to an agreement.
Well, then they'll never get HOA approval. Then he can never do his project.
Yeah, I don't think we need to insert that, what you're suggesting. I mean, I think if he can summarize what he said.
Just a quick clarification, Jonathan. In the meantime, at the applicant's discretion, he can continue processing his plans for a building permit pending getting that. So if they want to take that risk, and they could certainly, it doesn't stop the process.
Yeah, but we don't need to state that.
No, I just, it's just so everybody realizes they have an option to continue without this being a delay.
Jonathan, is a building permit condition, is a requirement of the building permit getting an entitlement?
Oh, yeah.
So that comes back to that interpretation question.
Okay.
So what, the direction that you could give is that the, in PRDs, the HOA should have the final say on exterior modifications and potential additions, and to start drafting that interpretation. And separately, HOA approval is required prior to final issuance of building permit. So they, they have already submitted for a building permit, they could continue in that review, but prior to issuance of a building permit, the, the version of the issued permit, those plans need to align with the stamped plans from the HOA.
What's the downside to that? If you, are you, have you guys been reviewing PRD and doing entitlements on those for some time? Or is this relatively a new phenomenon?
It, it, there's been inconsistency.
Okay, in the city's approach on this?
In the city's approach on this.
And that's why you're trying to bring light on this and say, what do we really want to do? What I'm hearing from my colleagues is they think that the city policy ought to be that the HOAs be the final arbitrar, and that, and that a building can, permit be conditioned on an HOA approval and stamp on their plans. That's, is that what I'm hearing from my colleagues?
No, it's not the final arbiter. It's just one of the, their input has to be taken, you know, as part of the process. Because if they're.
He's suggesting the city planner is doing analysis. What's that for you?
I mean, this is a unique community that the only impact on the public is the community itself. It's not like it's a row of houses down a main street, or condos down the main street. So it really is up to them, but still, planning staff will have to make sure, height, I mean, we can get too detailed here. Height, they can't exceed the height limit of the underlying zone. They still have to have two covered parking spaces, which was required, items like that. But it wouldn't be the kind of comments we make in design review. That is up to the association.
That's item, that's item, that's finding E.
They have to approve any construction or alterations of the original improvements. So even though we may allow them to go over their porch, you know, to connect to their garage, if the HOA doesn't want it, and doesn't give approval for anybody to do that, that, that is the rule. But then it goes to the city, and everything that they've designed has to meet, you know, code, unless, unless there's special encroachment rules, or, you know, other architect, like everything has to be Spanish colonial.
We've had a motion on the floor for a long time here.
So, but we modified it to say, continue.
To date uncertain.
Using that or just table it? And let the parties just.
Is table, is tabling a denial?
No, it just means we're not taking any action on it, and it won't be brought back up unless somebody makes a motion to bring it back.
You could bring it back, though, Jonathan, if you felt like you had to.
Correct.
If you table it?
Yeah.
Okay. It just kind of starts the public hearing notification, all that over again.
Correct. Anytime that there's a, well, yes, if you either continue it to a date uncertain or table it, the public who's here and interested doesn't know when to come back and resume discussion. So we would re-notice if there was need for, for that, in any way to return.
And odds are, it may not come back here.
Okay. So do we need, do we need justification beyond just tabling it, or can, or continuing it beyond a date certain? Do we, can we just leave it at that? Or do we need to have additional direction?
I, I think the only additional direction would be follow-up related to establishing a policy through an interpretation, and whether you want that to be done at the city planner level, or whether you want that policy conversation to come back to you at planning commission.
But that can be a separate.
That would be a separate, would not.
You guys have an appetite to have a policy discussion on the PRDs?
Oh, I think it would clear up and get, that would be basically a policy decision, operational decision on, yeah, I'm all for that.
You're for all of that coming back?
It's separate from.
But not for this project.
Right, I understand.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. How about this, I'll just make a substitute motion that we table this project 24-568, and that, that would be, A, B, direct, direct the city planner to bring back a policy proposal and discussion on discretionary review of PRD projects to the planning commission. That would be item B.
It may be a specific one. Some may actually have the information in them that we don't have on this one.
That's the moral of the story. Is these HOAs should write guidelines.
That is the moral of the story, yeah. The HOAs, the absence of that creates the problem. So that's my substitute motion.
I will rescind my second.
Okay, do I, how about a?
I'll second.
Okay, second. Let's have a discussion on this. Commissioner McCann?
No, I'm on board with that. I'm just wondering if, do we need to have a Part C about directing staff to have code compliance look into the, you know?
Jonathan, is that required, do you, would that be helpful to you, or have you heard enough of?
You're already aware of it.
Yeah, I'll have that discussion with our building official to determine whether there's ongoing action and next steps needed, etc.
You don't need that.
Doesn't need to be part of the motion.
No.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, that passes. You're going to have to get with staff to chart out your next steps. Well, that was the first time, and, you know, we're, we did our best to kind of grapple with it, and maybe, you know, it took longer than we all wanted, but thank you, everybody, for doing something that was a first time in the city's history at this level. My agenda is over here. We are done with our public hearings. We have no new business, no old business, reports of staff and commissioners. Jonathan, any reports from you?
I don't have any news to report at this time, thank you.
Okay, I have a report to my colleagues. I attended a planning directors of Orange County conference, and it was well-attended by most cities in Orange County. I had the opportunity to, yeah, attend the planning commissioner track, and it discussed a lot of important issues that are happening. I'd say the one takeaway I would, a couple takeaways. One, I heard a lot of complaints from my, from our professional colleagues in other cities, that they struggle with things that I think our staff does an excellent job with. Staff reports, getting guidance from their city attorney, things like that. We, we don't have a lot of the problems that I heard people complaining about, who are in our role in other cities. I also heard there are some phenomenal amount of development investment happening in Orange County. I think Anaheim had announced $2 billion of development happening over by their transportation center that's located by Angel Stadium, $2 billion of development in that area.
Oh, they've got the gigantic projects.
Yeah, OC5.
Yeah, it's amazing. So there's a lot of development going on in Orange County. Newport Beach announced 3,000 residential units that they've approved in Newport Beach.
Well, the people from LA are going to be moving.
So quite a bit going on. So anyway, I just wanted to.
Well, thanks for going.
Let you know, I attended.
Commissioner.
Okay, you're welcome. Does anyone else have a report that they want to bring up?
I do want to mention that I will not be at the next planning, because I have some trouble.
Okay. Jonathan, Commissioner Prescott Loeffler's not going to be at the first meeting in March. So you'll just sign it, send that little absence notice in. Okay.
I think it was there, there was a discrepancy on the schedule, which I think said 2/29.
I've got that right here.
But then we are continued to like the 11th.
So our next meeting on our tentative calendar is March the 5th.
Oh, March 5th, okay. So we're not meeting again in February?
No.
Okay.
And we have, do we have an agenda for DRSC for next Wednesday, Jonathan?
We're not meeting on 30th?
Do you know?
Then we'll see when it occurs.
If it, if we don't have anything on the tentative agenda, it's likely to be canceled.
Okay. Okay. But so we'll just, we'll just adjourn to the March 5th meeting?
Yes.
All right, I'll move that we adjourn. Then the City of San Clemente Planning Commission to our next regular scheduled meeting on March the 5th, 2025, 6:00 PM, held at the San Clemente City Hall Council Chambers.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kemp. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you again, everybody.
Yeah, commissioners, I'd like to thank you all for your patience with my first presentation to you all, and chewing on a lot of information in one evening.